Remember, it's a throne speech, right? It's not a budget.
Right.
It's just kind of an aspirational document, right?
It is, it is. And, you know, funny you mentioned budget. I mean, that's really where the details will be and where we will know if the government is serious or not. The problem, of course, is that we haven't had a budget in over 18 months, so we have no idea what's going on.
Okay. Carl makes a very good point, though, Ashton. It really is a continuation of what the Trudeau Liberals have been engaged in since they parogue Parliament, however many weeks it has been. And maybe this is the conclusion of this attempt to hit the reset button, following all the controversy about We Charity.
Right, right. So sort of time to think of it as put the shield away, bring out the sword. Yeah, look, it's difficult to do, and there's a lot of moving parts here, right? I don't know what's going to be said later on television tonight by the Prime Minister or the opposition leaders, and I certainly haven't seen an advanced copy of the Speech from the Throne text. But a little bit difficult to go running out with a sword when you sort of have one hand tied behind your back, and that's a little bit what's happening with the pandemic for the Liberal Party, I think. So, you know, again, I'm looking for them certainly to flip the script on sort of the terrible spring and summer that they had with We. And I think when you present sort of a vision or even a checklist of things that you absolutely are committing to do sets you up on the right footing. And we know for a fact that the cabinet ministers are going to get new mandate letters as well. So I think they are setting up for a bit of a relaunch and a bit of a runway into what is ultimately going to be the next election. Again, I don't think it's going to be this fall. If I was a betting man, I'd say next spring. I think it's all trending towards that.
Okay. What if it is, what if this, what if this address, you know, the Speech from the Throne, but then the nationally televised address? What if it really is nothing more than, you know, going through what the government has done to this point, you know, kind of this rallying cry, this call to action to do your part, to stay six feet apart, wear your mask, and wash your hands, and flatten the curve, and flatten the curve, and we have your back, and we're going to be there for you? What if it's really nothing more than that, and there's really no big blockbuster tonight?
Yeah, then it's a missed opportunity, isn't it?
Then doesn't, that would just reek of opportunism, would it not?
I look at it the exact other way. I don't think it's an opportunity at all. I think it's a misfire.
A misfire, a mistake.
A misfire because you're allowing Aaron O'Toole to define himself in front of millions of Canadians and give him an audience that he never would have had otherwise. If this is routine information, you put out a press release, you do a press conference as the Prime Minister, which allows you to do that on your own. If you're going to take over national airwaves and give your two main opponents time to speak to Canadians directly, you better have a good reason for doing it.
Okay, okay. What should Aaron O'Toole be hitting on tonight, then?
Well, it's a tough spot for him, because he doesn't know exactly what the Prime Minister will say. I mean, if he goes in the direction of invoking the Emergency Measures Act and trumping the provinces, like we're in a different scenario altogether.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If he just re-ash the throne speech and puts his spin on it and tries to get the better clip for the nightly news, then I think I agree with Ashton. I think this is a big opportunity for Aaron O'Toole to lay out his vision. And I think that's what I would advise Mr. O'Toole to do, is don't try to react to the Prime Minister. Lay out your vision for Canada to an audience that has not really been exposed to you just yet. And so in that sense, I think that the stake are quite high for Aaron O'Toole, because as we've seen in the polls, they're neck and neck, the Tories and the Liberals, around 32, 33% apiece. So the race is on, and the election could come any time if the government doesn't deliver the goods, because there's no guarantee that the opposition parties will support them forever, especially if they see a weakness in what the Liberals are bringing forward.
Yeah, so you've been hammering at home this morning, Ashton. I mean, it could be a God-given opportunity here for Mr. O'Toole, right?
Yeah, look, if I am his team of close advisers, and we know a few of them well, I think this is sort of, look, you're going to get your moment in front of millions of Canadians. You yourself have COVID, so you can sort of speak to the importance of doing your part and being a good Samaritan, being a good Canadian. But he will never speak to more people at one time than he will tonight, period, unless he becomes Prime Minister.
Right, right. So what should his tone be, then, right? What's his tone?
It's a good question. Look, I think it should be overall conciliatory. I think where he's going to have to pick weak points in the Prime Minister's speech, whether it be the Speech from the Throne or what the delivery is tonight at 6:30, I think it's going to have to be about sort of specifics. Great, we're all for supporting Canadians, making sure Canadians are healthy, but how are we getting them back to work? What are we going to do for this sector? What are we going to do for that sector? Are we presenting a plan to get back to balance in my lifetime, in your lifetime? Like, let's talk about specifics and not just talk about things we want to do, let's talk about things we're actually going to get done.
Okay. I still get the sense that both of you think something big is coming tonight with this national address.
Well, I think it'd be better for the Prime Minister if there was something big. I think, but, you know, I think it's not the, it wouldn't be the first time that this government was good at iping something only to fall flat when it came time to deliver. We've seen it happen again, and this could be one of these occasions tonight.
I don't know, because yesterday I was, you know, I'm sitting there and I'm thinking, okay, well, he's not going to quit. No, he's not going to call an election. So, and then it started to come out, well, we've confirmed he's going to talk about this and he's going to talk about this. But you think, I get the sense that the two of you still think something big could happen tonight.
Man, we'll have to tune in, I guess.
Holy cow. Those devils. Okay, should ask you, so Blaine Higgs did it. He pulled the trigger, and it paid off for him in New Brunswick, won a majority government. What do you think of the Horgan decision here to do the same thing in New Brunswick? After saying, there's no way I'll have an early election, I promise I'll never have an early election, I'll abide by the fixed election date, but I guess being up by 19 points in the polls is hard to resist. What do you think, Ashton?
Yeah, politics is shit, huh?
It'll never get any better for me than this. We're going now.
Look, I think they're going to win ultimately. You'll have to keep in mind that Horgan's numbers were far better than Higgs's were. But the situation was a little bit different for Blaine Higgs. That sort of working supply arrangement, not coalition supply arrangement, was getting more and more tenuous by the day. And so I think he had more of a reason, frankly, than John Horgan to go to the polls, just for, you know, how the province is being governed. But, look, I've seen a couple of people, very smart people, people in polling, say, this is hubris at work. This is what happened to Jim Prentice, I could see it happening to John Horgan. I don't think he is going to sort of fall to the Prentice effect, unless there's some major gaffes along the way. Look, there's a reason why political campaigns are important, it's because that's ultimately what your constituents get to judge you on. But I don't see Horgan fumbling the ball before he gets to the goal line.
Okay. Carl?
That said, it has happened in recent elections in B.C. where the NDP was in the lead by 20 points and ended up losing. The British Columbians are known to swing wildly if they don't like what they see. That said, I don't think that people will care that three years and a half after the last election, John Horgan is calling an election, especially since the partner, the leader of the partners, the Green Party, the former leader now, Weaver, Andrew Weaver, said that he agreed that, you know, it was fine to call an election at this time. And so for a wild swing to happen towards, you know, potentially the Liberals, you would have to have a leader that is...
This program is brought to you by Ignite TV. Now you're in command. Visit rogers.com for more details. Call the Rogers TV Viewer Response Line, email us, or connect with us on social media.
City Council staff, members of the public who are watching us on Rogers 22 ou cab de ventre pour des francs au fond, and online at the City of Ottawa website. Welcome to the City Council meeting of the 23rd of September 2020 by electronic participation. The meeting will be held through electronic participation in accordance with Section 238 of the Municipal Act 2001, as amended by Bill 197, the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act 2020. For those who are able to, please rise for a moment of personal reflection. Thank you. Merci. A few reminders for today's meeting, which is being held using Zoom. Members of council and staff are asked to stay on mute at all times unless called upon to speak. Members of council, if you do wish to speak to an item, please use the raise hand feature located at the bottom of the participants list in Zoom, and star nine for members who are on the phone. And the meeting will be broadcast, as I mentioned, on Rogers TV. Members and staff are asked to position their cameras so that their faces are centered and as close to the top of the frame as possible. And phone-in participants, please do not put the phone on hold. As you know, during the pandemic, we have not been handing out our Mayor City Builder Awards for obvious reasons, but we're making a very special exception today in using Zoom technology to reach out to welcome Mr. Gurbachan Singh Betty, who you can see on your screen. Mr. Betty, it's a great honor to see you again, this time virtually. And also, Councillor Egli will say a few words as Mr. Betty is in Councillor Egli's ward. As you know, this award recognizes people who have demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to making our city a better place through volunteerism or exemplary action. Mr. Betty is being honored for his outstanding volunteerism in service to the Indo-Canadian community and the wider community in Ottawa. He is a World War II veteran originally from India who moved to Ottawa in 1987. Shortly after arriving in Ottawa, he began full-time work as a Staff Sergeant with the Canadian Corps of Commissioners and retired at the age of 90. You're a remarkable member of our community, and I am honored to present this award in advance of your 103rd birthday, which will be this Saturday. So happy birthday very much. It's what an honor to have you as part of our council meeting today. You've received many honors for your volunteer work over the years, including the Queen Elizabeth II Diamond Jubilee Medal in 2012 and the Paul Harris Fellow Award from the Rotary Club, the highest award that the Rotary Club can hand out. He also volunteered with the Canada Senior Centre, is now a patron of the Punjabi Seniors Association, and I know Councillor Sads knows the great work that the Punjabi and Indian Canadian community do. I often pop into the John Mollack Centre and see lots of members of the community enjoying fellowship and some good food. He received an award of honor from the Punjabi Heritage Foundation of Canada for his literary contributions in four languages, Punjabi, Urdu, English, and Hindu. Mr. Betty has also received certificates of appreciation from Jewish Family Services, Sikh Community Services Ottawa, India Canada Association, the Red Cross, and the Queensway Carlton Hospital. Volunteerism has been a large part of his life, and he's worked to build peace and understanding across communities. He initiated interactions with the Ottawa Community Immigrant Services Organisation and Jewish Family Services Ottawa, and facilitated dialogue among various faith groups to promote understanding between Hindus, Sikhs, Christians, and other faiths. Gurbachan also participated in the annual SEVA Walk organized by the Ottawa Sikh Community to raise money for the Queensway Carlton Hospital Foundation. And when a devastating earthquake struck Haiti in 2010, he donated his pension check and two weeks later donated his next pension check to the relief efforts. I want to thank you very much, Mr. Betty, for your generosity and your many contributions to our community.
J'aimerais cesser cette occasion pour remercier Monsieur Betty.
I'd like to thank Mr. Betty for his numerous contributions to the community and the whole city.
103rd birthday on September 26th. I know that you have the love and support of your family and the entire city of Ottawa. On behalf of the City of Ottawa and my colleagues on City Council, I am thankful to have this opportunity to extend our best wishes to you. And virtually, I'm going to hold it up here, we have the certificate that will be delivered to you later this afternoon, and I'm going to ask Keith Egli, your City Councillor, to offer a few words, and then we'll hear from our very special honoree. Councillor Egli, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure that I have all that much to add after your remarks and the listing of truly accomplished life. Mr. Betty, you are an exceptional gentleman. You really are. And, you know, you've made Ottawa a better place by all the good work that you have done in the time that you've been here. And at the age of 103, you are a shining example of what it means to be community, what it means to participate, engage, cooperate, and support your neighbors and friends. And again, nothing more to say other than we've been so lucky to have you in our city and for all the good work that you have done. Enjoy the day, enjoy your birthday on the weekend, and now I think we're going to hear a few words from you, and I look forward to that.
All right, thank you, councillor. Mr. Betty, the floor is yours. I understand someone's there to make sure the mute button is off. So go ahead, sir, please.
Thank you very much. I express my gratitude to his worship, Mayor Jim Watson, who have considered me works for City Building Award. I consider this the right forum to recite my latest poem entitled Coming Shadows. My stamina is no more than sturdy and brisk. Indulgence in any strenuous activity is tantamount to inviting risk. The feat to live that longer is not that small, nor not how longer the bell can resist ringing to take a stall. Having crossed 103, I pray God to bestow me a good, healthy Supri. I don't feel desperate. I've lived my life with full pomp and gage. As long as I am endowed with good and healthy faith, physical faculty do not forbid, the eyes remain awake, and the life is not at stake, no harm lies to let heaven wait. Lucky is the old person in harness who dies rather than remaining bedridden and in misery passing life. Lingering and burdening the caretaker who are to look after his plight. With all his worldly obligations done, his departure cannot be detrimental to anyone. Passing away a such a person is therefore a matter of delight. It calls for rejoicing and not mourning or crying. For everyone is destined to ultimately die. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, sir, for your wonderful contributions to not just our city but our country, and we wish you a very happy birthday on Saturday. I'm sure your family and friends are gathering, and we're to practice social distancing and stay safe. So it's an honor to present this to you, and as I said, our staff from the city will come by with the frame certificate for you later today. So thank you very much, and thank you, Councillor Egli. Our next item is to launch the 2020 City of Ottawa United Way campaign. Today, I'm pleased to launch the campaign for United Way East Ontario, as it's now called. Je suis heureux de lancer aujourd'hui la campagne de Centre-est de l'Ontario auprès des employés de la ville d'Ataua pour l'année 2020. I'd like to introduce our, don't have to introduce her, everyone knows her, Councillor Laura Dudas, who is our honorary campaign chair, and Dan Chegnier, campaign chair for the City of Ottawa. I joked with Dan, I think he's got a lifetime assignment as the campaign chair for the employees. He does such a great job, thank you very much. And Sarah Young also should be pointed out as our campaign corporate lead. Thank you for joining us. Merci à vous d'ajointre aujourd'hui. The work accomplished every day by city employees and the achievements of United Way East Ontario go hand in hand to improve the lives of thousands of residents of our city. Notre travail que les employés de la ville accomplissent tous les jours et les réalisations de Centre-est de l'Ontario vont de pareil contribuant à améliorer la vie des centaines de résidents d'Ataua. Over the last six years, City of Ottawa employees have helped change the lives of more than 6,162 people in our community. Focusing on last year, city employees did a wonderful job raising more than $280,000 for United Way. I congratulate and thank our city team for their contributions. Félicitations à tous. City employees are truly making a difference in the lives of people right here in our community. Over the past five years, city employees have raised more than $2.3 million for local people in need. This year, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the United Way campaign looks quite a bit different, but our goal is the same, to raise $300,000 and help over 1,000 local people. As we know from United Way and Michael Allen and our former colleague Mark Taylor, the money stays locally right here in our various communities. And as the city knows well, the social fabric of our communities are being tested like never before. COVID-19 has had an unprecedented impact on all of us, but the pandemic has hit vulnerable people in our communities the hardest. I want to thank United Way for partnering with the City of Ottawa on several initiatives throughout the pandemic. In August, the City of Ottawa and United Way partnered with, partnered together on Facing Forward, an initiative to distribute free mass to our cities most vulnerable. United Way East Ontario has also been working with our Human Needs Task Force and Ottawa Public Health to distribute mass with the help of frontline agency partners to make sure the masks go to the people who need them most. I know the United Way has also been working with all levels of government throughout the pandemic to assist with more than 90 programs and initiatives. This includes help for food security and food delivery, support for mental health and isolated seniors, volunteer support, and many other programs. And I know the United Way will continue to provide the support for those who need it most. I encourage city employees to help United Way East Ontario continue its great work in our community, because every little bit helps. Every day, city employees work to make Ottawa a better place, and by personally contributing to United Way, we are helping to build a healthy, strong, and caring community. And if I could just conclude before I ask Councillor Dudas to say a few words, this is going to be a tough year for a lot of the charitable sector, because obviously a group like United Way relies on the workplace campaign at the federal government, and as we know, most of the federal employees are not in the workplace anymore. So the ability to have the fun things, whether it's the chili cook-off or bake sales and so on, are not able to happen. But I would urge all of our employees, and those employees in the federal public service, who have done great work during COVID, but who have not missed being paid every two weeks, we need you to dig a little deeper this year and to help organizations like the United Way, because we know personally, as members of the community, how impactful those dollars are. And while everyone has challenges with finances, particularly during this time, those of us who have benefited from being paid on a regular basis, we need you to dig a little deeper. I can't say it any more simple than that. We need you to help, and if you made a donation of maybe $100 or $150, maybe if you'd go up to $200. Because I'm concerned about charitable sustainability during a pandemic, and we need all hands on deck to do what we can to help this great organization that has done so much for so many people in our community. So, Councillor Dudas, congratulations on being named the honorary chair, and I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Watson. Bonjour tout le monde. It's truly a pleasure for me to be the honorary chair of the City of Ottawa's 2020 United Way Employee Campaign. This is the second year that I've taken on this role, and, you know, last year it was a phenomenal experience, being able to watch city staff gather together to raise funds for this worthwhile cause, and for me to be able to see the benefit it brought directly to our community. The United Way and the city have a very long history. It was designated as the city's corporate charity of choice in 2001. Centre est l'équipe designée organisme des bénéfices des choix de la ville en 2001. By supporting United Way, our employees are supporting vital work of more than 90 local programs that are directly benefiting people in our community, people with disabilities, at-risk children and youth, homeless youth, people facing mental and health addictions, and many, many others throughout our communities that are our most vulnerable. These programs are changing lives, and they're critical for our community. Ces programmes changent des vies.
These programs have changed the lives of people in our community.
Watson mentioned just a few moments ago, the work of the United Way has been so important, particularly in these last several months due to COVID-19. As a member of the United Way East Ontario Board, I've seen firsthand the work that's been done by our social service sector, by those in the community that are on the front line, that are trying to address the needs as they arise for some of our most vulnerable. Every week throughout the first early months of the pandemic, and now once a month, the Community Response Table is meeting to address those very concerns. We have many members and partners in the community who are trying to collaborate to address issues as they arise. Throughout this campaign and throughout the fundraising efforts that will be done by our city staff, we'll be able to support those initiatives and continue to provide our most vulnerable communities with the support that they need to help us all get through this pandemic. I'd also echo our mayor's comments in encouraging city staff to dig a little deeper, to continue to support the United Way throughout this campaign. You know, last year, as I mentioned, there was many activities, bake sales, clothing sales, gatherings, yoga in the park, and we can't do that this year. That's something that COVID has not allowed us to do. So I'm looking forward to seeing the creative ideas that employees come up with on how we can continue to fundraise, to continue to support. Employees can also sign up for payroll donations. There's many ways for you to continue to support this very vital organization as they support those in our community who need it the most. This fundraising initiative, they'll continue throughout all departments until February, or sorry, not February, forgive me, Friday, December 4th in 2020. And as I said, I look forward to seeing these activities, and I will participate as best I can to help support them in partnership with my co-chair, Dan Chegnier. So thank you again for all of the city employees who in the past have committed to and supported the United Way East Ontario, and once again, we're asking you to continue to do so. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup.
Merci, Consulier Dudas.
Thank you very much, Councillor Dudas.
I should also take note and congratulate our colleague, Councillor Daruz, who was just this week elected as the Chair of the South Nation Conservation Authority. So thank you for taking that role on, councillor, and I know Councillor Luloff and our board members were very instrumental in your success. Roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Consulier Luloff?
Je suis présente.
Councillor Dudas?
Councillor Dudas?
Oui.
Councillor Harder?
Oui.
Councillor Suds?
Oui.
Councillor El Shantiri? Councillor Gower? Councillor Kavanaugh?
Oui.
Councillor Shirelli? Councillor Eggly? Councillor Deans? Councillor Tierney?
Président.
Conseil Ferri?
Bonjour.
Councillor King? Councillor McKenney? Councillor Leaper?
Oui.
Councillor Brockington?
Oui.
Councillor Menard?
Present.
Conseil Cloutier?
Président.
Councillor DeRusse?
Oui.
Councillor Moffat? Councillor Mihen? Councillor Hubley?
Oui.
Mayor Watson?
Ici.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Confirmation of minutes, adoption of process verbal pour le 9 septembre 2020. Confirmation of minutes for the September 9th, 2020 council meeting. Carried? Carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflits d'intérêt. Communications as presented, regrets, councillor Scott Moffat advised he'd be absent from the city council meeting of the 23rd of September 2020. Motion to introduce reports, motion important, presentation of report, councillor El Shantiri, please, seconded by councillor Eggly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That report from the Ottawa Community Land Development Corporation entitled Ottawa Community Land Development Corporation 2019 Annual Report, Build Heritage Subcommittee Report 15, Community and Protective Services Committee Report 13, Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water and Waste Management Report 10, Planning Committee Report 29, Transit Commission Report 6, and the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for the term subject to the Planning Act explanation requirement at the city council meeting of September 9th, 2020, we received and considered.
On the motion by councillor El Shantiri, carried? Adopté? Merci. Good morning, everyone. Bonjour tout le monde. Thank you all for joining us for today's city council meeting, and I'm sure that you will agree with me that the recent increase in COVID-19 cases in our city is deeply concerning. The quick rise in cases is something we haven't seen since the spring. With our younger residents going back to school, we must be extra vigilant to help stop the spread of COVID-19.
Our young residents are going back to school, so we must be extra vigilant to help to stop the spread of COVID-19 now.
A vital part of stopping the spread of the virus is limiting our close contacts. I was pleased to see the province tighten the gathering limits for indoor private gatherings as well as outdoor private gatherings, 10 people maximum for private indoor gatherings and 25 people maximum for private outdoor gatherings. Failure to comply with these restrictions can result in a $10,000 fine for the individual hosting the event and $750 fine for each person participating in it. This change in gathering size limits and the order issued by Dr. Etches yesterday presents a stark reminder that this virus is very much still in our community and can have grave consequences for each of us and our loved ones. With the return to school and activities, we've also seen an increase in wait times at our testing centers that is just not acceptable. Seeing the long lines at the local COVID-19 testing centers has been frustrating, to say the least. We understand that this can be very discouraging, particularly if you're bringing children with you to get tested. I've spoken to the presidents of the four hospitals. As most people, I believe by now know, the hospital system is running the test centers, not Ottawa Public Health. So I spoke to the presidents of Ottawa Hospital, Queensway Carlton, Molfor, and Chio, and made it clear that this situation must be resolved as quickly as possible, especially as we head into the colder weather. I was pleased to see the increased hours of operation at the Brewer Assessment Center as well as the introduction of an online booking system for the Chio line.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our hospital partners and the staff working in them.
Hospital partners and their staff who are working on this. Their ongoing and tireless work to resolve the issue is to be applauded, and we greatly appreciate their tremendous efforts. The testing centers at Moody and Heron are actively working on doubling their capacity from 500 tests per day to 1,000.
On Monday, I was pleased to announce that the city is working with l'hôpital Molfor Ottawa Public Health and our other health partners to mobilize a COVID-19 care clinic in Orleans at the Ray Frill Recreation Complex.
On the COVID-19 care clinic in Orleans will follow on the planned opening in mid-October. Please do not go to the Ray Frill Center now because the system is not set up. The care clinic needs some construction. We need to punch out a wall to have a door so we have a separate entrance to exit to allow for recreation and library programming to continue in other areas of the facility with minimal disruption. I want to thank the councillors from the East End for working with us to ensure that this announcement was made recently and it gets up and running as quickly as possible, ideally before mid-October. That will take some of the pressure off the Brewer Center, and we're continuing to work with our partners around the clock to identify workable sites, walkable sites rather, in the downtown core and other parts of the city. And I know my colleagues in the central core certainly have been working hard to push the hospitals, and we hope to have some good news on that in the next week. I also want to thank members of our rural communities in the West End who continue to ensure that information is available and that we use some of the devices that we have, potentially the paramedic bus, to help supplement some of the test sites in more remote areas in the south and the west of the city. I'd urge those going to get a test only to do so, as we've been told time and time again by our medical professionals, if you're exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 or you've been asked to by OPH. This past weekend, we saw paramedic partners from across eastern Ontario work together with the Queensway Carlton Hospital to open a drive-through COVID-19 pop-up at the Canadian Tire Center. Again, my thanks to our Canada councillors for their support of that initiative, as well as the folks from Stittsville who would benefit from that center. A total of 2,750 COVID-19 tests were completed at the site over a two-day period. This was truly a great example of collaboration between the QCH, community paramedics, partners, physicians, the Ottawa Police, the Ottawa Senators, and Elgonquin College. I'd also like to acknowledge the work of Ottawa's community and frontline paramedics who have continued to support long-term care homes and keep our community safe. Last Friday, Dr. Etches and I had the opportunity to meet with Premier Doug Ford when he was in Ottawa for a provincial territorial minister's meeting. In addition to talking about the new provincial limitations on private gatherings, Dr. Etches and I also stressed the need for increased capacity at the labs. As you know, the more people we test, the longer the time it is to get the test results back. So we need to improve the test capacity, and the premier indicated that they have already started the process of purchasing more test equipment to be sent out to the regions, including here in Ottawa. We also expressed our appreciation to Premier Ford of the province with their support of the mobile pop-up sites that were out and about over the course of the last couple of days. I also spoke last week with our federal health minister, the Honorable Patty Hedges, about federal supports for test centers and lab capacity, and we hope to hear some news back from the federal government shortly on their ability to take some of the overflow people who want to get tested or who should be tested at a federal facility.
I'd also like to thank our incredible healthcare workers who have been working tirelessly throughout this pandemic.
Our incredible frontline workers, healthcare workers who have been working tirelessly throughout the pandemic, and that includes frontline workers of the people who are cleaning, deep cleaning the buses and the trains at OC Transport, that those people who are working in garbage and recycling, and it's a heavier job. People are staying at home, there's more garbage and recycling, and that slows them down, and it's backbreaking work to be lifting all of those black and blue boxes into the truck. And of course, the people on the 911 and the 311 call centers, they're often forgotten as frontline workers, but they very much are the front of the frontline workers, and I thank them sincerely very, very much, along with, of course, our other first responders, bylaw, police, and fire. Again, I know this isn't easy, but everyone has been doing an exceptional job. We still have some outliers who continue to think it's a good idea to go into a store without a mask or to be cooking in a restaurant without a mask. We need to get the message across loud and clear that this is not only putting your life and health at great risk, it's doing that to loved ones as well. So putting a speedy end to the second wave is quite literally in our hands. We need to ensure, as councillor Eggly has told us many times, to remain COVID-wise, wear a mask where required, isolate yourself if you're feeling sick, stay two meters apart from those outside of your household, and exercise proper hand hygiene. We need to continue to work together and do our part to protect everyone's health and safety. Now, I'm going to turn it over. Dr. Etches, I believe, is going to, doesn't have a prepared statement. We thought we'd go straight to questions, and I believe councillor Harder has a question to Dr. Etches. And Dr. Etches, thank you again. You had a great interview again this morning on CBC Radio, and we appreciate your accessibility in getting that information across. So councillor Harder, I see your hand up for a question to Dr. Etches, please.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for yesterday announcement, Dr. Etches. I need clarification because since your announcement yesterday, I'm receiving, as I'm sure other people are, questions about what it really means. So for example, if your child is sent home from school because someone in their class has been identified as having COVID and they're told to go home, my understanding is that that person is the only one in the household that has to stay home, not go to work, not go to school, not go to sports, not go to, not go outside the house, not go to a store, unless other people show symptoms. Versus if you take your child who has the sniffles to a center and you wait the eight or nine hours or whatever, and you have to wait, as is the case for last Saturday, a pop-up at the Canadian Tire Center, five days potentially, for a diagnosis on the test, that everybody in your household must rest in place in the house, not go out on the sidewalk, not go to work, not go to school, et cetera, regardless of the situation. Can you confirm this, please? Because I think it's going to be very, very difficult messaging, if not impossible. And I think that we need to find a way to make it simple and straightforward. So am I right in what I just said?
Thank you for your question, councillor, and absolutely appreciate people need clarity about what the direction is. I do want to go back to the goal here, which is we want to keep schools open, we want to make sure people can go to work. And right now, we're in a time where the number of infections in our community is high, so high that it's affecting schools, and it is rising, like we're on the upswing here, and we need to turn that around. So what we're talking about, the goal is when people have symptoms of respiratory illness, we need to make sure it's not COVID. And I do understand people have questions, what if it's sniffles, it's just sniffles? We're asking for a scientific review of the list of symptoms. I think that will make a difference. But right now, we have seen it can be COVID when it's just sniffles. And so most people know that, most people don't want to be the start of an outbreak. What we see is when COVID enters the house with someone with symptoms, it's very hard not to pass that on within the house. And so that's the root of why we ask a family to stay home when someone has symptoms, because it could be COVID and it could spread in the house and then pass on. And we've shared some examples of that. You know, we're asking that family to stay home, but if you don't, and we have examples, it can quickly go to 100 families that have to stay home. We need to start and contain it. But you're right, you are right. It's not everyone that has to stay home in the household if everyone's symptom-free. So if we've told a family, you're a close contact, your child is a close contact of someone in a school setting, they need to go for testing, that child doesn't have symptoms, no one else in the house is sick, the rest of the household can continue to go to work, continue, the other siblings can go to school. So that impact isn't so great. I think, you know, Peel is doing the same thing. Peel is also seeing, like, we're on the upswing, the trajectory is in the wrong direction. Toronto Public Health actually has had this order in place for months, and nothing changes for us here in Ottawa in how we approach families when children have symptoms, when someone tests positive for COVID. This order doesn't change our approach. The thing this order changes is in rare circumstances, it'd be someone in a daycare or a long-term care home, now we have a tool we can point to right away and just say, look, there's an order, we have the authority to collect this information. And people, people then, you know, our experience has been share the information when they understand we're going to protect their privacy. So the order doesn't really change the advice, and I appreciate there's many families affected while they're waiting for test results if their child has symptoms. But if it's going for testing because they're part of a school exposure potentially, that doesn't affect the rest of the household.
Jan, anything?
I think it's going to be confusing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Eggly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Etches. You sort of have dealt with the question, the first question I wanted to ask through councillor Harder, but, you know, people woke up this morning and saw the front page of The Citizen. You know, it was all about the order that you put into place. There are many other media outlets covered it last night. And just, you talked about it a little bit, but maybe you can expand a bit on how this changes or doesn't change the focus of how OPH intends and has been dealing with COVID in our community.
So again, the objective is that when people have symptoms, they're tested for COVID, we get a positive result, we follow up with that person to support them to be self-isolated. So that work doesn't change. Our nurses are constantly working with people who've tested positive to make sure they have the capacity to self-isolate. So we ask people, what do you need to be able to stay home? Do you need food? Do you need someone to look after your dog walks? Like, there's, you know, do you need us to interface with your employer? You know, do you need financial assistance? And so we link people to the supports they need to be able to stay home. That doesn't change. What changes is if we run into a situation where somebody is not providing us the information, we need to do the tracing to let people know if they've been exposed to COVID and stop transmission, then we can now say, instead of taking the time to write up an order that's specifically addressed to an individual and, you know, the numbers have grown, we need to have speed. Now we can just point to it and say this order exists, and that's how, you know, we need to have those tools in place, but we rarely, rarely need to use them.
Thank you for that. The other question I had was, you've spoken again today about how one case can turn into many cases, and the importance of self-isolation and, you know, is sniffle sniffles or is it COVID? I just think for clarity, if you could, if you could explain that your sniffles could be somebody else's hospitalization. So it's not one for one. I've got sniffles, I'll give you sniffles. It's something far more insidious and worse than that, isn't it?
Yes, this is hard because normally we don't have to stay, you know, home, we don't think about sniffle as something significant. It can be COVID, and then COVID spreads quickly in a household, and then you have people going into workplaces, it could be a long-term care home, it could be a childcare center. We've seen that. It spreads very quickly, shuts down a childcare center, then a whole bunch of families are affected, or it goes into a school. The long-term care home is the most, you know, concerning because we do know when it enters long-term care homes, it takes an enormous amount of energy to control that transmission, and people do die in those settings. You know, we need to avoid that. But for all of us, we just want to be able to continue with as much work and as much school as possible. So it's also a So it's also about, you know, each of us doing our part, if there's someone in our family with symptoms, to enable, you know, others to continue about their business, rather than it spreading so quickly and so many families being affected. We're in the wrong place on this curve. Like, you know, what's the next step? It could be having to be more strict and ask everybody to stay home, right? We can't, we don't want to get there. So this is about when you have a family with symptoms, stopping it there, being cautious, so we're not all going backwards.
And at the risk of sounding repetitive, and I know I will, but is our best defence still not back to basics? Is it still not keeping away from one another physically, wearing the mask, washing the hands, staying home if you're sick? Is that still not our best defence, as it was in the spring and over the summer, to putting those numbers way back down?
Exactly. We know these things work now. We have a lot more evidence than in March, that if you stay home when you're sick, you wear a mask when you're indoors with others, you stay two meters away from other people, and you keep your hands clean, that works. Those are the tools we have to stop transmission, to turn the curve around. We've done it twice, right? In the early days of the pandemic, and now in July, we turned the curve. We need to do that again now, again, not just because of what might happen in long-term care, but because all of us need to be able to go back to work and to have our kids in school. And so those are the things, just like you said, wash your hands, wear a mask, stay two meters from others, and stay home when you're sick.
Thanks, Dr. Etches. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Excuse me. Thank you councillor. Next is councillor Suds, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Etches, for the updates that you and your team have put out most recently. And obviously, a thanks to all the health partners that have been involved in the response. I'm wondering if you can share with us, what are the priorities that you're communicating to Ontario Health and the CRIC, so that we can better understand as councillors what to be advocating for when we're speaking with our MPs and MPPs?
So you're talking about the priorities for the testing system in Ottawa. The priority is to have more capacity to take swabs from people who are symptomatic or referred by public health. And that means, more capacity means seven days a week, 12 hours a day, it means more sites across the geography of our city. You know, I've seen the partners who are operating the system move ahead on some great improvements this week. So now parents can book an appointment for their child through the CIO system. You know, this is great. That avoids the lineups, right? And the difficulty, how hard it's been for families. So I do appreciate that things are moving in the right direction. There are more sites being identified. We heard about in the east, the rail, the rail centre. The other piece is the laboratory capacity. So what we're seeing this week is the turnaround time has jumped, you know, up to five days, I think we're hearing now. And that is because the labs only have so much capacity to process samples. We're not the only ones in this situation across the province, right? Toronto, Peel, their labs are saying, we're not going to take your samples, they're dealing with their own samples. So there is that backend peak. And it's not just about more machines, it is about the people that run the machines, right? Laboratory personnel are experts in their domain, and they're a few in number. People have been talking about different ways to speed up the laboratory process, pooling of samples. I've spoken to the labs about this and what can be done around pooling of samples. In fact, at this point, that takes more lab personnel time. It actually would take them more people time, and so if they don't have the people, it's not the solution right now. But these are the things we need to collectively problem solve. And, you know, I think the message to the general public is, if you don't have symptoms and you're not referred by public health, you know, we're not recommending you go for a test, and that will take pressure off the system.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate that. I have had residents reach out, asking questions about that, specifically because, for example, they've been told they need a negative test result to be able to go back to work, despite not having symptoms. Or a child that needs a negative result in order to be able to go back to daycare or school, and they don't have symptoms.
Those aren't public health requirements. So people do not need a negative test to go back to school or to work according to public health. If employers are somehow creating this requirement, then I recommend that people direct their employer to talk to us about the value of that testing, because it's not, it's not something we recommend.
Yeah, I think that's actually a really great point, Dr. Etches, because I am hearing more and more of that, and obviously, that's very stressful for people in the community. So perhaps it's something we need to think about messaging on, because I can relate, I can understand that that's a stressful situation for people, and we don't want them going when it's not necessary. So thank you for that. You know, yesterday, we saw 93 cases in the city, and, you know, we've heard, get back to basics, we know what we need to do to get there. But my concern is, as we're pacing right now, are we moving towards red status, as you explained the colour system to us last council meeting?
Yes, we are. Yes, and we've spoken about whether we're red now. Why I have not moved us into red as a global assessment is because our hospitalizations haven't stayed stable. This is good news, right? So the people who are testing positive are younger on the whole, and so we're not seeing the more serious complications that lead to hospitalization. We kind of lose sight of that, that actually COVID, you know, is a fairly mild illness for most people, and that's good news. The problem is, when there's so much in the community, it can escalate into populations with more vulnerability, and it affects us. You know, without serious illness, it's affecting us with schools, not being able to, you know, to handle the introduction of COVID. And so I think that I'm watching hospitalizations. Challenge with hospitalizations is a lagging indicator. So it will take a week or two weeks, you know, until we see if the hospitalizations are increasing, because it's after the spike, you know, that people then develop more complications. So, you know, we are close to red.
Okay. Not great to hear, but understandable. And maybe just one last question, I'll let my colleagues jump in, and that's with respect to the long-term care facilities in our city. Either the city, both the city-owned and operated facilities, as well as the others. You know, I am obviously concerned, we're seeing in the news, and we know that we have two homes in quite serious situations. And I'm wondering, how are we supporting, how is Ottawa Public Health supporting them? And how are we learning from the last wave and the best practices that were learnt earlier on in the pandemic?
Sure, I'm happy to speak first, and if others from the city homes want to join in. Well, we've certainly learned that the infection prevention and control practices need to be stellar and so, you know, carefully implemented to prevent COVID transmission. We know these environments are harder to manage, because sometimes we have people, residents, who wander, you know, but we know what can work. So we've seen outbreaks come under control with people wearing the right personal protective equipment, the right cleaning practices. And we've also learned in the first wave that how the homes are managed makes a big difference in terms of the supports to staff at a level that allows people to have the time to carry out good infection prevention, control, and cleaning practices. And so, you know, I think in this time, what we've done is learned how to move hospital supports into the homes faster, and that, where that's needed. But we do see homes have better practices, and that's why we're not seeing the same kind of spread in all of the homes. Once it's introduced, it's being better controlled.
Thank you for that. I'll leave it at that. I certainly appreciate the tremendous amount of work and your leadership during these difficult times. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Suds. Conseiller Fleury, s'il vous plaît. Councillor Fleury? No, okay. Councillor, oh, there you are.
Yes, I'm here. I was speaking without volume. Apologies.
Sorry, can you speak up councillor?
Yes, can you hear me now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thanks.
Great. Miss Madam Etches, Paul.
Thank you, Dr. Etches, for your communications. I'd like you to be clearer. We are in the second wave, we're increasing, the number of cases are increasing every day. What are you thinking about the closing up? There's some places that are reopening now. We are used to wearing the mask and maintaining a safe distance, but we don't have any strategy of re-closing for certain groups, such as bingo halls, some spaces where there are up to 50 people that can gather there. So how do you anticipate this second wave? What will be done to limit interaction? Thank you for the question. It's important for me to have the support they need.
With good behaviors, and that businesses are working hard to make sure that those are in place in their environment, so distancing, wearing masks indoors, you know, that's important. If we don't see good practices, we will find outbreaks in workplaces. This is the time, right? Like, we will risk going into having to do more closures if we don't turn the curve. And so, you know, I'm not, I'm not interested in creating more economic damage. Like, that harms our health of the population. We need to keep places open that are employing people. We'll need to take a targeted approach if there is a type of business or that's causing more challenge. I'm certainly in conversation with others in the province who are seeing this rise in cases, again, in Toronto and Peel. You know, we're all interested in a targeted approach to tackle where infections are spreading. And for the most part, it's really the social gathering in people's homes, and we need to then make sure that, you know, we're adhering to the new provincial regulations of no more than 10 in a gathering, but really, as few as possible, right? So your household and the people who are important to support you in your life, whether they're grandparents or childcare, that's where we're at now. I don't want to have to shut things down.
Well, I respect that, but it's not required to close everything. Maybe some types of business could, you talked about gathering places for up to 50 people inside. I'm not saying that they are secondary businesses, but for the local economy, it's, their impact is fairly limited. There are several risk factors that come with the reopening of schools. Are you satisfied with the measures taken by school boards? I'm wondering about the interaction that we're creating in a family with a few kids. One child goes to a daycare center, one goes to school, another one goes to ballet lesson or swimming lessons. And so there's a lot of interaction points here within the same family. Isn't that a factor that we should start taking into consideration to give a chance to schools to stay open? The number of contacts is included increases the risk. The difference in some programs compared to inside the household is that there are measures in place, such as physical distancing and the wearing of the mask. And we can always change things if need be.
Lots of information on social media. Councillors are speaking up on behalf of their communities, rightly so. Lots of confusion there, though. I mean, you know, I, in my area, there's been a pop-up testing, only specific and accessible to a school. We're hearing rumors of others that are opening. What's your, can you clarify for all of us, who is responsible for testing and providing the testing and deciding on location of testing within the city of Ottawa? Because, you know, is it a public health measure? Is it an Ottawa hospital measure? I've seen now correspondence from Ontario Health East team members. Who is it? Who is it? Because, you know, it's sort of, we were vocal because of concerns from our residents, but do we really have authority? And do we have Ottawa Public Health testing centers that are set up?
So the body responsible for overseeing the testing strategy in Ontario is Ontario Health. There's an Ontario Health East office. And then that body, you know, delegates and expects operations of testing sites to happen on the ground. In Ottawa, the body responsible to oversee the testing, you know, operations and approach on the ground, it's the Champlain COVID Response Committee, so it's a collaboration. The people who actually operate the sites are the Mall 4, the Ottawa Hospital, CIO, and the Queens Bay Carlton Hospital. I agree with you. What we need is one place where people can understand what's the plan, what's open, what's going to open, what's the timeline, what's the system? Do you book? Do you not book? So that is the work that the Champlain COVID Response Committee is acting to implement urgently, is sort of one point of contact to understand what exists and what's the plan around testing into the future. Because there is a lot underway to add more capacity. Ontario Health is a part of that. So everyone's now at the same table, they're meeting daily, they're coordinating. You know, this is going to bring more clarity, you know, and the ability to communicate about what's happening all from one place.
Yeah. My final point, and thank you for that, Dr. Etches. I think it's just looking to all of us colleagues to say, like, we have to be consistent, we're all raising issues, and it's important, no one wins, that there's more cases in a particular school or a particular community, or that there's a testing center in a particular community. Look, it's not a win or a loss. We're all in this together. Until there's a positive case in Ottawa, we're all losing. So we're going in the red. It's important for all of us to stay consistent, and I'm happy to hear, Dr. Etches, that the LIN team is going to develop a plan that they're going to present publicly. So then, it's not a competition within areas of the city, it's a citywide approach on the matter. Thank you.
Merci. Prochaine, c'est councillor.
Next.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I begin, I just want to say how grateful I was to see the Mayor's City Builder Award come back, even though we're meeting virtually, it's good to recognize some great community builders, and it was great to see the gentleman this morning. So thank you, Mayor. Dr. Etches, we knew, basically, the start dates for school, we knew end of August was coming in early September, and yet we weren't ready for the tsunami of tests that we're now seeing. So how long is it going to take to get the testing capacity up and additional sites open in the city? We can't tell people that an eight or nine-hour wait is normal or to be expected, that's what people are still facing as of yesterday. When can we see the balance back in Ottawa?
So my understanding from those who are operating the sites is that they have extended hours, and they're going to be open through the weekend, this weekend, as they have not been previously. So there is more capacity there now, and the plan, you know, is to continue growing that. We've seen some changes to help with the lineups in terms of scheduling is now available for children and families, and I understand the Ottawa Hospital will have that for adults at Brewer very soon. And I understand the Ottawa Hospital will have that for adults at Brewer very soon. And the other hospitals are also looking at that. I really, I don't know the details of their operations, but I know they're trying to take an emergency response to move things along quickly.
Thank you, thanks. And you know, last council meeting, I said it'd be great to have outreach with councillors, for whoever's on that Champlain COVID Response Committee to sort of pick our brains and understand what our challenges are in our wards. As you know, there was a pop-up at the Canadian Tire Centre this weekend. I received no notification that that was happening. Some councillors did. Queensway Carlton confirmed for me that they didn't even have a list of who's on Ottawa City Council. It's not your problem. But to Matthew, to councillor Fleury's point, this is where we all need to get information so we can help our residents get tested. Can you confirm when schoolchildren are asked to get a test? Are they required to provide proof of a test to come back to school?
No, there is no proof required. What we know is families are trying to do the right thing. You know, families don't want to spread COVID. They don't want to be a source of outbreak, absolutely. If children don't go for a test, if family says we weren't going to do that, then it's a 14-day period that they would stay on the do not attend list. And there's no test required to get back into school after that 14 days. They come off the do not attend list and carry on.
Is there a way in the future? Because you and I spoke about this. My fear is that the same class might have multiple issues in the school year. And so we may be asking the same schoolchildren to be out of the classroom for a long period. If you identify a classroom, that child is tested positive, we ask people mandatory, go get the test. Once you prove that you are negative, you can come back and not have to wait 14 days to be out of the classroom. Because if this happens multiple times, you know, I think we all share, we need to have kids in the classroom. So if they've proven they're not diagnosed, is that sort of a green light to come back?
So we're talking about the situation where you have someone who's a contact, somebody who tested positive. And in fact, that 14-day period is very important because that's the full, you know, incubation period that's possible with COVID. And so even if you get a test after five days where the virus should show up, it's possible that someone is still incubating the virus. And so, in fact, you know, that negative test at that point in time is reassuring. It means that they haven't picked up an asymptomatic, you know, infection at that point. But we are still trying to protect against transmission for the full 14 days. The way, I am concerned, I share your concern about the same family having to be home like over more than once. And the way to prevent that is to stop the transmission of COVID in the community so we don't get it introduced to schools again and again. And for children to stay home when they're sick. We need children to stay home when they're sick. So I think we are in the early days. We're learning. Teachers, school boards, principals, they are trying to make online learning available when people are sent home. This is part of the support. But we do need to see, if this is happening over and over again, we'll need to reassess. And that's what COVID is making us do. Be adaptable, be flexible, you know, learn as we go along.
Sure, thank you. If we have, you know, a finite supply of medical professionals who can be at our testing centres and working in our labs, are we in Ontario looking at the Gargle test that British Columbia has started to use and whether or not that is something we can see in Ontario sooner rather than later? Have you looked into this?
As soon as I saw the notice, you know, it's like, I messaged the lab, you know, like, can we do this? Can we do this? So absolutely, it's been flagged, they're looking at it. We understand, you know, that the labs will be assessing, you know, the science and the rationale to use it here. So I look forward to getting an update on that.
Are there any other ways to test for COVID other than a nasal swab or the Gargle test? Anything that doesn't require as many medical professionals to administer the test and then test the sample?
Yes, I mean, people are looking at different things. A saliva test, I mean, just the front of the nose. Some of these things are not as sensitive. And so it does matter. If there's a higher level of COVID in the community, you want to be able to detect it, not miss it. But these are absolutely things that are under consideration by the laboratories in Ontario.
Okay, thanks very much for your time. Thank you.
Great, thank you, councillor Brockington. Councillor Menard, please.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you as well to Dr. Hetches for our long OPH meeting on Monday. It answered several questions there. I did want to discuss the order from yesterday. There's just, there's two concerns that I'm hearing from folks most. And they're both related to the current regime in place to back up the order with the supports required. And so the first area of concern is around the testing capacity, that everyone with a family member in the household who is sick, especially with flu season coming, with the expectation to stay home or get tested. And so do you believe we currently have the testing capacity in place to carry out this order at this time?
So I'm just going to just clarify one point there because it might not have been clear in your comments. If a child has symptoms in a house, the whole family does not need to be tested. It's just the child with symptoms. And I think that our capacity is close if we were to focus on people with symptoms and those who are referred by public health. I think the testing capacity is stressed because we have other people who are going for testing where it's not necessarily so useful or important. And so, you know, we're trying to clarify when it's most useful to go for a test. And we need to continue to grow the testing capacity. So I don't think it's sufficient right now and people can't do it easily, right, without a wait. And that is important. Those plans are there. I think you've seen, you know, the hospitals have spoken about doubling their capacity at all the sites and adding more sites. The second piece is about what people need to be able to stay home.
So the second piece is really around the disproportionate effect that the order could have on people at the margins. And so people that don't have paid sick leave, for example, if they're expected to stay home and they're already living paycheck to paycheck, it's more difficult for them. And as we've seen, the pandemic has had a disproportionate effect on those people already. So that's the second concern. And I do have a motion related to that for later today. But I wanted to get your comments on that and how we're dealing with the supports for people that are already living at the margins.
Thank you. I share your concern. I think that this is an important conversation to have, that we shouldn't have some people who have supports to stay home and others who don't. It affects those families and it affects our whole community. So this order doesn't change how we'll approach people who have barriers to staying home. Our approach has always been to try to work with our city partners and the Human Needs Task Force, you know, to point people to emergency financial services and support to really, you know, case by case, person by person, overcome the barriers for people and work with employers if we need to. That doesn't change. You know, we do not use orders in those situations. We problem solve with people. The orders are for when someone's just refusing to help, right? And we need to make sure that we're protecting folks who are contacts and stopping the spread into vulnerable settings. So there's no change in our approach, which is to support people and facilitate people to stay home when they need to.
Yeah, I think people want to do the right thing and people at the margins who may be sick want to stay home, but they're often concerned that they don't have paid sick leave to do that. And so I will be bringing a motion later on today that I'm hoping we can waive the rules. It's directly related to yesterday's announcement. And I'll be sending that around to councillors shortly for consideration later in the meeting. Thanks, Mayor. Back to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Merci. Councillor Tierney, please.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Before I get to Dr. Hetches, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you and my council colleague, Matt Luloff, for the great work when it comes to specifically around the Reef Real Centre. I certainly can see that taking some loads off our other centres. But it was made mention that it may open by the end of October. Can you speak to that to see? Is it possible that it could be opened any earlier? Are we looking right the last day of October? Or is there a possibility of getting it opened earlier than the end of October to help alleviate some of those pressures?
Yeah, thank you, councillor, for that question. And thank you for highlighting councillor Luloff. He's been working with my office and public health on this project for some time. And I know you and councillor Dudas have been very, very supportive and former councillor and now MPP, Steve Blay, as well. We're hoping, we're aiming, actually, because this is being run by the Mo4, they've indicated that they hope to have it available by mid-October. And obviously, we'd like to see that pushed up even further. Because, as I mentioned in my opening comments, it would take a lot of pressure off some of the other sites. It would give people in the East End a better geographic, closer place to stop. And there's good transit options at Ray Freel as well. So, you know, I appreciate Dr. Bernard Leduke. When I spoke with him from the Mo4 a few days ago, he understood very well how challenging and frustrating it was for people, particularly in the East End, who don't have that close proximity. People in the West End had the Kanada option at the CTC and Moody Drive, but we need to get those hours extended as soon as possible. So I also want to thank Dan Briesbois and Dan Chenier from the city of Ottawa. They've been working tirelessly to get the facility ready. As I mentioned, we have to punch out a door so that we have easy exit and entrance and not colliding with people that who are coming in for sports and recreation opportunities in the library there. So thank you for that, councillor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So back to Dr. Hetches. I just, first of all, you do a tremendous job. And you and Keith, I want to thank you both. When it comes to, the mayor made some opening comments that people, he thinks people understand it's the Ottawa Hospital that's responsible for the testing. I humbly disagree. Even when I got a coffee this morning, people are like, saying to me, God, Ottawa, you've got to step it up. And I remind them, it's the Ottawa Hospital that does the testing. It's a provincial responsibility. Please send me an email, I'll forward them on to the MPP. But I truly believe Ottawa's the GOAT at this point. And that is concerning because for the last six and a half months, we've shown strong leadership from the city. But I did also, and I'm getting to a point here, we've also, your staff have been tremendous. So we email them as a single point of contact. They get back to us with a response. And they have to go out and get all this extra work done to figure out who's responsible for these questions and feed a fact to us. Today, I got a response back in regards to a question around testing. And it was kind of different, a bit of a pivot, where they said, we'd be happy to share this information with CCRSC and Ottawa Health. I'm just wondering, should we not be actually telling our constituencies? Here's the people responsible and contact them direct, or we can contact them direct, to really highlight where the true concerns are?
Yes, I think this is one of the lessons learned, is that when you're collaborating, and it's the Champlain COVID Response Committee that's overseeing operations, it's not the Ottawa Hospital, right, alone? It's not. It's not the Mo4, it's not the Queensway. And Ottawa Public Health is part of the governance group that oversees, you know, so it's a collaborative. And I think we've learned then it's important to have one point of contact and one voice. And so this is part of what's underway, is to shift that so that people do know, who do I talk to when I have questions, when I have suggestions about how to improve the system? And so this is what's coming. It's one place where all the information's together and people can send in their inquiries and their comments, you know, to the whole group. So I appreciate that has been a gap and we're working to address it.
And that's great. You know what? And that's my new pivot now, too, starting as of today. I really appreciate this. I'm going to tell people, start contacting these people direct with a lot of their questions or concerns. Save the hop, save the extra resource suck from the city of Ottawa because frankly, it is truly a provincial issue. But we have to work together, I understand that. When it comes to the, one of the questions that was there, which is a weird one, the testing in our Brewer facility versus the pop-ups. I've had a lot of complaints and I'm just trying to figure out if it's true or false. They say that the pop-ups are sent to Toronto versus, which are taking much longer to process, versus the Brewer Centre. Is there any truth to that?
So this is getting into territory where I don't know the operations and all the details of how swaps are being directed and handled from different operational sites into different labs. I can tell you in general, the way it works is that our Eastern Ontario Regional Laboratory Association usually takes the swaps from assessment centres and processes them. And there's also a Public Health Ontario lab in the region that does a certain amount. If they reach past 3,000 a day, which is, you know, that's a push, if the machine goes down or something, it's worse, then they send them to Toronto for processing. I mean, we're hearing that Toronto doesn't have a lot of capacity as well. They might not take them. So what's happened with the pop-ups, the mobile capacity that was brought in from Ontario Health, is they're not linked into the system yet. We're, and I say we're, I mean that the Champlain COVID Response Committee is looking at how to make sure the logistics work well, that the registration is into an electronic database that enables things to go smoothly in the lab front. The pop-ups all had to have manual data entry, which slows things down to get the information into the lab system. You know, so these are the things in the background. It's a bit, I don't know all the details, but there are sometimes more delays because they're not linked in. And that's why, that's why the goal and the plan right now being improved is that everyone, you know, has all the sites and all the mechanisms coordinated.
Excellent. And real quick, I see some committee this week. I know we're working very closely with Ottawa Public Health. I hear the Ottawa Neighbourhood Study is imminent. It's coming in like in the next week, which I'm super happy about. I want to thank you and the Chair. I think that's a critical thing for us. And again, last question, how are you doing?
I'm well, thank you. You know, in terms of the work that everyone at Ottawa Public Health is doing, I think there's a lot of strain. You know, the numbers were, you know, 20 or less per day just, you know, 10 days ago, maybe. You know, and now we're at 60, 90. That causes pressure. We're looking to draw on other supports and the central supports from the province, help from the city, but it's hard. The school health team is extremely busy. We need, you know, we're adding to them. It's, this is a hard time for the team. But I know everyone's very committed and they're wanting to support our community through this. And we'll continue to grow our capacity to support people.
You and your team keep well. Thank you very much, Doctor.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, councillor. And I like the shopping carts in your back display cabinet there. Councillor Luloff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciating how important it is to ensure that we have clear and concise messaging during this pandemic. And I believe that your team has done a very, very good job of that. I'm wondering if you might be able to speak to, and this is a bit of a sensitive topic, but the COVID stigma that surrounds some of these testing centres, especially shared facilities. I know that we are doing everything we can at all of our assessment centres in our locations to ensure that members of the public that are using other portions of facilities that we are using and that Ottawa's been a great partner putting up these sites. But I'm wondering if you might be able to speak a little bit about the stigma that surrounds people that are coming in for testing at some of these uh, that surrounds people that are coming in, uh, for, for testing at some of these assessment sites, uh, and, uh, the work that we're doing as well to ensure that, uh, there's no intermingling of otherwise healthy people that are, that are going in to use the facilities and, uh, those that are coming in to be tested.
Uh, thank you for, for that concern. Uh, we know it's no one's fault if you need to go for COVID testing. You're actually doing the right thing. If you've developed symptoms, uh, of a respiratory infection, we thank people for, for going and, and doing the responsible thing to make sure it's not COVID. And, you know, it, it is maybe, um, we're finding it hard in, in, in some, some communities, you know, to, to step forward and say, "I'm gonna go get tested." And so we're working directly with communities, uh, where that sense of stigma may be higher, um, and to, to think about how do we, uh, actually bring COVID testing more directly to, to sites, uh, closer to people through, for example, the community health centres? So people don't need to go, um, you know, uh, stand in line, you know, or, or present to, to a larger assessment centre. The, the scheduling helps, you know, it decreases the sense that I'm standing there in front of people. What we, we know is that when these sites are set up, um, there's a, a thorough review about infection prevention and control, uh, exactly because it could be that people coming in have COVID and we don't want it to be transmitted in that environment. So e- each hospital that's running a site has their own infection prevention and control expertise and they, they review all of that in terms of the movement of people, um, the, the equipment that people use, the cleaning practices. So the sites are chosen so that there is not gonna be a flow of people who are potentially, um, with the COVID virus, uh, into, uh, regions where others, uh, would have an exposure. Um, this, this is one of the, the ways, um, you know, one of the, the aspects they need to look at in determining the appropriate site.
Wonderful. I really appreciate the hard work of your team. I really appreciate the support, uh, of, uh, the Mayor, the MOFOR Hospital and my Eastern colleagues, um, on, uh, ensuring that we can expand, uh, capacity across the city. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Uh, councillor King, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. And, uh, I just have a few follow-up questions, uh, from, that were, were broached by councillor Flurry Brockington and Turney around coordination. If a second wave here, uh, which will be more complicated than the first wave and present more challenges for the system, do we have the most effective model of cooperation in place between, uh, the healthcare providers and, uh, the public health agency in the form of the Governance Committee? I know that you were talking about, uh, daily meetings and coordination, but is that enough? Do we need something more, uh, like a command centre where we can track things on real-time basis, uh, you know, determine the stress in, in, in the system in terms of parameters, uh, such as medical personnel available to work in testing or in, in hospitals? I'm just wondering if we have the right, uh, form factor in a sense in place to coordinate the efforts that, that are occurring between, uh, the public health agency and, and our healthcare providers?
Uh, so early on in the, the pandemic, I mean, we, we, we did adopt what's called an incident management system, um, where the, uh, emergency response was, uh, coordinated, um, with, with that mindset. So you had an incident manager and you had, uh, clearly, uh, delineated roles. We have alongside that, uh, the hospital CEOs, myself as the Medical Officer of Health, uh, uh, Tony DeMonte from the city, um, Home Care Lead from the, from the, you know, the LIN. That governance body, um, you know, kept, kept an eye on and, and oversaw the incident management, you know, urgent response. That urgent response has been stood down somewhat because our long-term care homes were, were coping better, uh, we're moving into a longer-term, uh, response that's, uh, not the same emergency mindset. And, and what's become, uh, clear is there's some value in that incident management system still for particular pieces of work. And so that's why, again, the Champlain COVID Response Committee has set up an incident management system again for testing. So this is, uh, this is being applied now, a command and control approach, um, to, to get the testing capacity up and the communications streamlined.
Well, it's good to know, um, obviously, uh, when we have, uh, emergency scenarios in the city, uh, whether there, there are tornadoes or flooding, uh, you know, we, we do have a, a command centre type of mechanism and it allows for, uh, you know, uh, more, uh, flexibility in terms of response as well as, uh, more accuracy in terms of information that is relayed. So, uh, that, that's very important. And, uh, you know, I, I, I'm thinking that that would be of assistance, uh, to, uh, both the ci- city and to the healthcare providers. I was also curious, uh, on whether, uh, we will have, uh, more concise timelines about, uh, locations and timelines regarding, uh, future mobile testing locations, especially that would cater to priority neighbourhoods. Uh, you know, my colleagues, uh, were noting that they were not getting, uh, you know, that the, uh, clear information on when, uh, these, uh, uh, mobile sites would, would actually emerge. Um, obviously, it's of, of major importance to, uh, priority neighbourhoods and neighbourhoods with, uh, vulnerable people, uh, low-income residents. So I was just wondering if we could have a comprehensive timeline around, uh, around these locations and even their geography where these locations will be in the future?
Yes, I'll, I'll take that back to the incident management system commander. Uh, this is what I understand they're working on is, uh, a plan that lays it all out, that shows everybody what's in progress, what, uh, the timelines are, uh, where the points of access will be.
Excellent. And I have one last question. And, uh, I was just wondering if you could describe the preparations that Ottawa Public Health is making for flu season, um, in the wake of the Premier announcing the largest flu vaccination campaign in the, in the province's history? I mean, you're already taking on, uh, yeoman's work and you're doing it wonderfully, but, uh, it sounds as, as if, uh, if we have, uh, the largest, uh, flu vaccine campaign ever, that's going to be an extra challenge, uh, for OPH. So I was just wondering if you could provide, uh, some detail?
Yes, uh, thank you councillor. I was able to, uh, outline our flu vaccination, uh, approach to our Board of Health, uh, last night and it probably isn't, uh, widely, uh, known yet. Uh, we're, we're working to get the communications up, uh, on our website. Uh, the, the broad picture is that Ottawa Public Health has been very ambitious this year. Uh, normally, we immunise about, not we, I'll say, I'll come back to that. Normally, the population in Ottawa, about 46% of people are immunised. And we're aiming for 70% this year. And so, so the massive amount of immunisation is, uh, the biggest, uh, quantity, you know, close to 300,000 of that is done by primary care providers. Um, we've heard the majority of primary care providers are going to be able to do their part this year and we've also heard some are challenged. And so a new thing that Ottawa Public Health is doing this year is to make the sites, we're gonna have six fixed sites across the city. We're gonna make those sites available for primary care providers so that we can help them with the setup, with the, you know, the, um, uh, infection prevention and control, the cleaning, so they just can come in and immunise their own patients. So that's all gonna be with a schedule, a scheduling system. So we're not gonna have that lineup. The, the clinics that Ottawa Public Health runs directly, usually we reach about 11,000 people. You can see the different order of magnitude. We are aiming to double that this year. Uh, and, and the reason we operate clinics is because, uh, pharmacies are the next biggest player. So pharmacies usually do, you know, closer to 200,000, uh, immunisations in a year. We've heard from pharmacies, they're planning that again, they're planning to do more this year, um, but they can't immunise people under age five. And so that's, you know, often the focus of the Ottawa Public Health clinics is for, for children under age five. The third focus for Ottawa Public Health, besides our clinics partnering with primary care, um, i- is, is to reach populations who have, uh, mobility issues, they can't get out, they're isolated, they're in shelters, they're in congregate care settings. We normally focus on populations with those kinds of barriers. And this year, we're adding in the support of the Red Cross so that the Red Cross will be adding our capacity to reach people, uh, with those kinds of barriers. So, um, we expect that we will have some vaccine, uh, delivered from the province in early October. Uh, we'll need to get that out to hospitals, long-term care homes, retirement homes, you know, congregate settings. Um, and, and the larger quantities of vaccine are expected more towards the end of October. Uh, so our larger clinics will open, uh, you know, probably the, the very end of October. Those timelines are set by the province and so we don't have definitive dates yet. Uh, but all of this will be put on our website, uh, for people to understand. So typically, if you go to your family doctor, we encourage you, go to your family doctor. If you go to the pharmacies, they'll be there for you. And then, um, you know, if, if it's gonna work better, uh, to, to look at the scheduling and scheduled appointments through the Ottawa Public Health clinics, that will be there.
Thank you.
Right, anything else councillor? Okay, uh, councillor Meem, please.
No, those are all my questions.
Councillor Meem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, thank you, Dr. Etches. Um, Dr. Etches, uh, Barhaven councillor Jan Harder and I have been advocating for a testing centre in the south end of the city. We, together, between the two of us, have about 100,000 people and a great number of those are, are seniors. Uh, but listening to what you're saying today, I, it strikes, strikes me that with, um, you know, our stretched resources with the number of people who are doing the tests, um, and the finite number of lab technicians who are able to do the test and they're already backlogged, is there even any point in us asking for a location in this end of the city? Is it, it's virtually, we're, you know, we're at capacity right now. Is that fair?
Uh, so we do want points of access across the city. So there's absolutely, um, that is the intention, I, I believe, uh, you know, is to, to have more access across the city. So there's, please, you know, continue to raise, uh, your, your ideas. We need the testing capacity to be used for the priorities of people who are symptomatic and children who have, uh, been referred by public health because of the school exposures. So I, I think the, the other piece of it is, um, to, to really make sure we're using the testing capacity in the best way possible, uh, and that will help, uh, you know, ha- have the lab be able to, to turn things around more quickly.
Yeah, uh, but is it fragile right now? I mean-
It is, it is, yeah, yeah.
And how mu- is there a backup plan if, you know, the lab techs get sick? Or if the people in the front line get sick? You know, it's a fear.
Uh, it, it does affect the turnaround time. Every time a machine goes down or the laboratory personnel have to stay home, a- absolutely, that increases the turnaround time. Uh, so we understand the Premier, uh, you know, is working on getting more machines. He's talking about, uh, you know, other personnel. We have, as the Mayor said, looked, uh, to the federal government to see what they can do in, in our town with the facilities. They have, uh, any laboratory capacity or, or people. So, uh, yeah, we need to continue to grow the capacity and that is, that is what's happening.
Okay. One last question. Um, uh, last week I had advocated for a, a targeted message using real-life stories of people who had been, who had contracted COVID and, uh, to, to get that message out to people right now to, um, to have a better understanding of what this virus means to a person. And it is, it's not just this, and it, it affects people so differently. And it is serious, it's still serious. But the young, the people who seem to maybe not be getting the message, don't get the, don't get the messages from typical media. I'm talking about the 20 to 39-year-olds that you talked about earlier in the week who are the biggest group now who are becoming infected. And 40% of those are getting it from large gatherings. If we use non-traditional media, the, the kind of me, and, and had people talk about how long they were in hospital, how this has impaired their health, um, are we going to be thinking about something similar to that? Because I think that's, we really need to hit this target group right now. Because often, I feel like I'm preaching to the, to the people who are in the choir. Everybody who's doing the things right. Uh, how do I get to the people who are ignoring everything we're talking about today?
Uh, that, that is a, a good observation that we need to take different communications approaches with different parts of the population, different age groups. Uh, we, we do have channels for, uh, young adults and we will, uh, continue to use them. I've also raised this with the province. So the provincial communications campaigns around COVID also need to be targeted to people between 20 and 39. And, uh, my understanding is that they have brought in behavioural scientists and people who know about behaviour change and trying to influence younger people. Um, and so I do expect there'll be more coming from the province as well in terms of campaigns, uh, for younger adults, uh, as well.
So if, if we were to reach out to somebody, say, in our community who's been in the hospital for several weeks and see if they can get them to talk to us, getting those stories out there will absolutely help. People, sometimes we need to get hit over the head, like, to see somebody's face and to see what this has meant to them. As others, they just think of numbers and, you know, nothing really counts.
Yes, and, and even, e- even when we think about the higher, higher rates in this age group, uh, most people in this age group are doing the right thing, right? Like, I, I, I know people are concerned. They don't wanna spread COVID. They're not, they're not trying to, to ignore the rules. It's just hard sometimes in this age group. You have to go to work, you have to, um, you know, connect with people. And, um, and so we, we will continue to look at the barriers people are facing. Uh, what is it that's making it difficult, um, you know, uh, to stay home or to decrease the risk? We're certainly promoting smarter socialising, right? Socialise with distance, socialise virtually, um, those kinds of things. But, uh, yes, if you have particular ideas and, and spokespeople, uh, any councillor out, out there, actually, if you have spokespeople, messages you wanna convey, channels to reach your population, please do not hesitate. We will build that in to the communications campaign.
I'm looking for, like, this weekend's gonna be absolutely gorgeous and I know that people are gonna be thinking this is their last opportunity to have that party. Uh, Jay hits the beach to be, and, you know, um, and it worries me, uh, because large gatherings are the problem. Um, so, yeah, I, I think we gotta do a real push before the weekend, so.
Sure, and, and we do have new regulations. So the, the number 10 is pretty small, um, to, to, to remind people of that, uh, that, that that is under provincial law now. So, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll be working with our city enforcement, of course, uh, you know, they'll be making sure that people understand that, uh, that limit to gathering.
Okay. And, but we say we've got the rules and, and you can do, are we going to enforce them? And that, you know, often that's the little loophole. I'm doing it, but I never get caught.
Uh, yeah, I, maybe our bylaw partners wanna speak to that, but, uh-
But anyway, I'm, I'm finished. But Dr. Etches, thank you so much for everything you're doing. Um, um, I really appreciate it, just like all my colleagues. Thanks.
Thank you, um, councillor. Thank you for raising the south end, um, issue. That's one of the sites that, uh, the federal government is looking at. There's a site in the south end, so if we get some confirmation on that, uh, as soon as possible, we'll get it out to, uh, you and councillor Harder and councillor Deans.
Sorry, can, Mr. Mayor, can you just explain that, that the federal government's looking? Could you just explain that?
Yeah, the, the Minister of Health spoke to me about an option of providing, uh, greater, uh, test and laboratory facilities. And they're looking at some sites around the National Capital Region where they can help us. And one of the, the more promising sites was in the south end of the city. So, uh, when the feds are able to announce that, uh, that will take pressure off people going to Brewer and, uh, it will also give us more, uh, laboratory test capacity. So, it's just-
Through Health Canada, uh, through Health Canada.
Yes, yeah, through the federal government, that's right. Dr. Etches, just a-
All right.
Uh, sorry, this is an, uh, side on that. Uh, is the pop-up, um, sites, are they still here or were they here just for a few days?
Uh, Mayor, I, I don't know of all the operational plans to continue to use the Ontario Health, um, capacity. My understanding is the paramedics that were brought in from neighbouring units were just there on the weekend at the Canadian Tire Centre, but they're looking at bringing back more capacity for this weekend as well in a similar way. Um, the mobile pop-up sites are continuing. Uh, those are from Ontario Health and they are, uh, for schools where there's a higher number of close contacts that need testing. And so that mobile school-based service is continuing throughout the week. And I, I have heard from many, I, I do appreciate that people need to see what's available in one place and a- in one place and a plan, and understand what's coming. So this, this will be, you know, this is the goal of the CCRC.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A few quick questions, I guess. We hear occasionally, we, you know, many more people are seeking testing, so it's not surprising that we're finding more COVID. The numbers have gone up to 90, a concerning number. Is it actually more prevalent in the community than it was over the course of the summer?
Yes, I would love to speak in more detail about some new data sources that are coming. I'm going to just mention that the city wastewater services have been working in a partnership with a CHIO researcher to look at the virus in sewage. And it's a great early indicator of what's happening with the virus level in the community, because it's not dependent on people presenting for testing. And it shows, there is no question, when you look at it, we have a higher level of virus in our community now than we did in the summer. In fact, the sewage data predicted preceded the spike in July, and then came down, as the testing numbers also came down at the, at the end of July into early August. And now the sewage is showing a rise, that we have more virus in our community and the trajectory is up. So it's not perfect, this is still kind of research data, but it gives us that confirmation that we're not just getting more people coming forward for testing and so finding more, we also have a higher level in the community. And we have other clues about that. The percent that tests positive is going up, so used to be less than 1%, I think we're down around half a percentage of people who went for testing or testing positive. Even as the number of people testing is growing, we're still getting a higher percent that are testing positive. So that's what we have, like, my message, I want to be really clear, is it's too high. The level of virus in our community is too high right now. It's causing too much disruption to schools, and it's getting into long-term care homes, and we need to, we need to turn it around. And so it comes back to all of us, the tools we have, we can do it. Most important thing, limiting our close contacts.
Thank you very much for that. How much longer are the lines than they could be for testing because people are seeking tests proactively?
I think that if we stuck to people who have symptoms, and the children referred by public health or other close contacts referred by public health, we would see a significant drop in the wait time. We still need to grow our capacity because we're heading into flu, like, flu season, more, there's more respiratory virus out there. You know, the initial target I gave for children was to be able to test 2,000 children a day starting in September. You know, we haven't hit that yet, we don't see 2,000 symptomatic children presenting at this point yet, but that's, that's an indication of where we need to get to.
Okay, thank you. With respect to schools, it's early days, we've seen cases in schools. I think a couple of schools have now been declared outbreaks. What are the trends you're seeing with respect to spread in schools, or is it simply too early to tell whether or not outbreaks are happening? Or can we expect more outbreaks to happen, or are the cases isolated?
Again, due to the level of COVID in our community, it's being introduced into schools, and I expect that will continue. I expect it will rise, given the trajectory in our community is rising levels of infection. I expect we will get more outbreaks. Yeah.
Okay, no, that's good. Well, not good, obviously. And then finally, just one question, and I think maybe Steve Canolakos or Valerie Turner might want to handle it, but the scheduling for appointments seems very ad hoc between different stakeholders, there's no central spot. We heard at IT Subcommittee this week, the nimbleness with which city staff are able to respond to things. Is this an area where the city can bring some of its IT resources and expertise to the table to get something up and running that is one-stop shopping?
So in the incident management system now that's been set up to rapidly improve the testing situation, I believe the city has some link-ins to that, so it would be part of the conversations about what can be done. That said, CHIO's already stood up a scheduling system, and Ottawa Hospital already has a scheduling system that's in use at Coventry, and it's coming to Brewer. So at this point, it's about getting the Mofford-led and the Carlton-led systems up, and I do understand that they're working on that. So I'm not sure the city needs to step in, but the city is linked into the conversation.
Okay, but I just want to make sure that those resources are on offer, and that that offer is being taken seriously by our healthcare partners. Dr. Etches, thank you so much for the work you're doing. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, councillor. Excuse me, councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak. Dr. Etches, before I ask my questions, I also want to extend my sincere appreciation to you and your staff for the work that's being done. In particular, Ashley and Emma have just been amazing with any questions we have, and the quick response and the help for residents, so I really sincerely appreciate that. The questions I'm going to ask you is, two of them are around the process piece. I'm just curious, is anybody looking at the process that we go through for testing to see if we can streamline that a little better? Because the feedback I'm getting from residents is they're saying they had to show their ID multiple times through the process, and that there was a lot of questions and answers, and obviously, some of them very important, of course, but they're just wondering if there was any way to stop the repetition in there, like, how many times you have to show your ID, for example?
Yes, the whole process, you know, needs to be reviewed for efficiencies, and I can say that I have seen this happen in some sites where the same number of staff, at the beginning of the pandemic, that were seeing, you know, 100 people a day, a couple hundred people a day, are now seeing, you know, hundreds of people a day in the same amount of time, because they learned. They learned how to be more efficient, how to streamline those processes. So that lends a continuous improvement and quality improvement and process flow is one that has been applied to the site and probably needs to continue to be applied where there are lessons to be learned. I'll take that back, you know, to provide that feedback.
One other piece to that was, we see these long lineups, and I'm just wondering, does anybody go down the lineup to make sure that those people need to be in the lineup? Because I'm looking at, for example, the case that caused the, or they think was the trigger for the outbreak at Westan Villa, was somebody that got tested too soon, and had a negative test, and then was brought back into the community and ended up being positive. Is there anybody going through to make sure that these people need to be in that lineup?
So again, I'm not, I'm not sure about the details of how the different sites are running them. People tell me that this is happening, that there is somebody who goes down the line, but I'm not sure if it's consistent across all the sites. And again, it's something I've raised that would make a difference. I understand there is, there is communications about the priorities for testing. I'll just continue to provide that feedback.
Okay, thank you very much. And we know, like, you've announced in some cases where Ottawa's stepping in to take over long-term care facilities. I can only expect to see more of that in the winter. I'm wondering, because, you know, I've got firsthand experience with Westan Villa, great facility up to the outbreak and everything, but now there's no way to contact anybody in there, because it's been taken over, it's, there's no message just being returned, you can't take in anything to residents and stuff like that. So I'm just wondering if, if we're going to do more of that, taking over facilities, we should probably have a communication protocol as to, from the moment they take over, who do you contact for the day-to-day stuff, to find out about family members and residents and so on? So just another bit of advice on that one. The last course I have for you is to do with the order yesterday, and again, I appreciate your staff did get back to me with some very good information on it, but I think we're going to have to really push this out to the community quick, because the reaction I saw yesterday was, you know, if their kids have allergies, or a family member's sniffling, whatever, that it means everybody has to stay home for two weeks or they face a fine. I know that's not the intent of your order, I certainly understand what you're trying to do and support what you're trying to do. I just think we need to, along with the messaging you're putting out there, I think we as councillors need to ensure that the messages, in particular around this order, get out to people so that we don't have a panic, or worse yet, people just saying, okay, that's enough, I'm not going to listen anymore. Okay? Thank you, Mr.-
Yes, councillor, I do, I do think probably the key message for councillors to share with the population is that this order doesn't change any of the expectations for the general public, you know, we understand people are doing the right thing, we are not using this to go out and monitor people and track people down. This is a tool that will simply be used in rare, you know, rare situations where we have someone who's blatantly refusing to help with a public health investigation. So there is no, no intention to have bylaw involved at all, there is no need to be issuing fines. This is about making it clear when we need someone to support the public health investigation, that we have the authority to collect that information.
Great, thank you, councillor. Councillor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Well, I just wanted to start by thanking you, Dr. Etches, and my colleague councillor Eggly, for your incredible leadership. I know this has been ongoing, and I admire the work that you and the entire OPH team are doing to help this community, so thank you most sincerely. I wanted to take this opportunity to, as a member of this council, to make a personal plea to the citizens of Ottawa, to help us flatten the curve. I'm reminded of that old, very famous Margaret Mead quote, that says, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world; in fact, it's the only thing that ever has." And I think we all need to be those citizens right now. We can't leave flattening the curve to others, the responsibility is firmly with each one of us. For many people in this community, it's a matter of life and death, and every citizen needs to take that personal responsibility. So I just wanted to say that to all of our citizens, that we can't leave it to others, it's on us, each of us, as members of this community, to do our part. And Dr. Etches, my question to you is, can we avoid getting into the red? Or is it possible that we won't get there if we all do our part?
Yes, I have a lot of confidence that the people of Ottawa can do this, we can turn the curve, because we've done it before. We have those tools now around, just as you said, each of us doing our part, we know that makes a difference. I do believe we'll do it.
Thank you for that. My only other question, because most of them have been asked, it's about our most vulnerable citizens, and especially at a time when we're coming into the colder months. I know, I worry about, really, those vulnerable citizens, many from shelters. I know facilities like the Jim Durrell Arena, for example, were used for shelter capacity last year when Jim Durrell was closed. I'm wondering what the plan is to make sure that we have shelter capacity going forward.
Thank you. I probably should defer this question to our Community and Social Services Department lead. I do know there are conversations happening between the shelters and Community and Social Services Department. It is important, for sure, to be able to have solutions for people to come in, out of the cold, and to be able to isolate if they have symptoms of COVID. That was one of the first priorities early on, was to create such capacity. And I know there have been some other announcements about funding to be able to expand capacity, so I'm, just, probably our, the city colleagues have more details of what's in place or planned.
Okay. Do they want to answer, or?
Very, thank you, thank you, councillor. So as part of our plan in terms of the research and for Community and Social Services and the Human Needs Task Force, we have been assessing our current capacity in terms of what we have today, but also predicting and anticipating in the second surge and in the cold weather, what we may actually need moving forward. And we are looking at expanding both isolation capacity, physical distancing capacity, and also supports and outreach to those who are living rough on the streets and looking for additional supports to ensure that they are brought to services within the community. So we have been in developing a plan. Provincial government has announced funding over the last month that really is to support those efforts moving forward. We have completed a business case to the province that has identified components of that plan, and are awaiting discussions with the province in terms of approval of that plan. We're expecting and have heard that that approval will happen in the next couple of weeks. And so once we assume or have approval of that plan, we'll be advancing those strategies moving forward and reporting back to council.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Gray. Would that involve, you think, some private facilities? It, you know, I'm thinking like, places like Jim Durrell Arena, if it's going to be open for recreational purposes. I know there are lots of facilities in the community that are underutilized, private facilities, and I'm wondering if we are looking at making arrangements with things like, for example, the Infinity Centre in the south end, that might have capacity to take on those kinds of goals?
Yes, exactly, we are looking at both private, other institutions, and other organizations that have come forward. But by all means, if there are organizations that have offered support or are offering facilities and locations, we'd be happy to receive those and follow up with those if they are not ones that we've previously been in conversations with, and happy to have that conversation offline with you as well.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much, and those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, councillor. Councillor El Shantiri, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Etches, for your marathon meeting the other day on the Public Health Board and today, and answering all these questions. Perhaps maybe my question, not so much to you, because we asked you the questions the other day, but during the meeting with the Ottawa Public Health Board, Cameron Love, the CEO and president of the Ottawa Hospital, he was surprised himself to hear about the pop-up at the Canadian Tire Centre. And we heard after that also the brewery park was staff extra, which is also was not utilized. So I'm asking you, and I'm asking the mayor, we need to work together, and we need to somehow eliminate those silos. Whoever, I know that Ontario Health organized a pop-up with help from paramedics from across the region, which is, we're grateful for their support, but really create more question and more anger at the community for not being able to benefit or understand what that means. So people saw a huge lineup of cars at the Canadian Tire Centre, saw Ottawa Police there, Ottawa Bylaws, Ottawa Paramedic, and other paramedic working, but didn't understand what is this all about. And we were told, the West End councillors, not to promote this event, that's, you know, that's for overflow from the hospital. We respected that, only to find out we were tortured in the media by other, by other groups who choose to advertise it and promote it, and yet, we can even tell our residents about this. So, Mr. Mayor, I would encourage you, if some local MPPs want to play politics and create those pop-ups on their own with some, some paramedics around the neighborhoods or around the region, I think as a mayor of the city, you have the right to know, and your residents, and have the right to know also what's happening in our own community. I don't think that was acceptable, Mr. Mayor, to be blindsided the way we were. And I know this question not for Dr. Etches, but this is for you, Mr. Mayor, to reach out to the province, because if the, if the CEO and the president of Ottawa Hospital was- was not notified about this pop-up, I think there's a silo being created here.
I will, I will step in if I may, Mayor, just to say that that, that has been changed in terms of now Ontario Health is working alongside all the other partners in this incident management system. So they're working side by side to be able to have one plan, communicate it all together and, and help people understand what's available.
Well, thank you for that, and we appreciate it.
Sorry councillor, I think Dr. Etches answered that that was a problem. We're, we're working to solve that. I want to give a shout out not only to Dr. Etches, but also Steve Kanalakis and Tony Demonte, because they are used to dealing with these kinds of incident command centers for other issues that we've had to deal with on a citywide basis, whether it's tornadoes or the flooding or the tragedies of the bus crashes. So there's no question, I think that was an oversight on the part of the province that we heard about it somewhat last minute. Grateful for the service, but would appreciate a little bit of an opportunity to have some input, because I think we could provide a better sense than the province as to where the need is for extra testing, because I think we all have a better handle on that in our own respective communities than, than perhaps Toronto does. So, you know, I think as Dr. Etches said, that hopefully won't happen again, but you know, to be overly critical or, or an apologist for the province, I think we're all learning from the last couple of months and clearly the lineups were a good example of how I think we probably didn't, you know, plan on a macro basis for the return of students. We knew they were going to be coming back to school in, in September, and that's caused a lot of frustration and that, and I've relayed that to the presidents of the hospitals. And I think we've started to see some action on that front with respect to the Mofores site in the East End, and we had the Canadian Tire Centre site last weekend, and we'll have more announcements in the, the week or so ahead to get better sites in the downtown and to serve rural Ottawa as well. Thank you. Anything else councillor?
All right, well, now I just want to give shout also to our staff and Dr. Etches and her staff for, for keeping up to date. Unfortunately, with that incident, it's not the Ottawa Public Health who dropped the ball in this matter, but I still, I'm glad to hear we are working together and we're going to fix that and it's not going to happen again. And thank you, Dr. and your team for job well done. I really appreciate it.
Great, thanks councillor. And our last speaker on my list is councillor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you very much. And appropriately after two hours, I want to ask about burnout and, and how things are going with, with the staff of Ottawa Public Health and your show. I think we realize how much more you're doing over and above what you normally do. And I think it's important for people to, to remember that, you know, even if we didn't have COVID, we'd have a ton of work for you, just in the daily functions of what you need to do. And we're, we're just want to make sure that things can still be managed, because there's so much more that you're doing and we know that people are doing double duty.
Thank you for the question. Just touched on earlier that we are taking steps to increase the capacity of our team, including at the senior management level. I, I have shifted and expanded the senior leadership team to have a wider distribution of work across more shoulders. And so that then is, is leading to the need to realign underneath the new leaders and make sure that teams have a sustainable workload. So certainly, again, appreciate city manager Steve Kanalakis's support to use some folks from the city who may be able to be redeployed. I know Valerie Turner's team is working on that, you know, and, and much appreciated. There are some central supports available through Public Health Ontario and the province, and we're using that. We, we have, we have said people need to continue to take their vacation, you know, because people do need breaks, they need to, to get away and recharge and have some COVID-free time. And so that's at all levels of the organization. We are continuing to ask people to take breaks and, and identifying backups for everybody so that that is possible.
Thank you very much. In terms of our vulnerable population, there's, are we keeping stats, well, we're keeping stats on the areas that people are getting infected. You've got that great map of, of that. And, and in terms of the schools that are having outbreaks too, is that going to help in terms of making decisions of where to put some pop-up clinics for people who, who don't have cars and are not going to be able to reach those far out locations?
Yes, Ottawa Public Health does take a look at our data in terms of where are people who are testing positive. And while we know there's COVID across the whole city, urban, rural, suburban, we do, do know there are some populations at higher risk. And we've learned over the course of this pandemic, it's not always as simple as just bringing in a mobile testing site. There is real stigma, you know, in terms of being labeled as somebody who's, you know, infected, and we just want to move away from a focus on, on just testing to think about the supports people need. And, and that, that work has been happening. It's been happening through the Human Needs Task Force and our, our community health centers under the Ottawa Health Team are, are taking a lead. Right now, this is one of their top priorities, is how to, to work with community leaders, you know, the African Caribbean Black community, specifically, you know, certain neighborhoods where we see that there's greater exposure risk and people need supports to be able to decrease transmission, to stay home when they're sick and to access testing. So, so this is, this is a top priority of those partners.
Great. And in terms of mental health as well, to give those tools as well?
That's right. That is, that's part of the supports needed and the services. And Ottawa Public Health has redeployed just about everybody from our own core services. I won't go into detail about all the things we're not doing, that would be a very long list. But one thing we have kept two people to work on is mental health. And, and in particular, given the, the research that showed, you know, the need to bolster supports for the African Caribbean Black community, that is a priority that we continue to work on with partners.
Thank you. This is more of a question for our social services in terms of when people do get sick and they're in overcrowded residence, such as shelters, et cetera. We've already had an outbreak right in my community, the Carling Shelter. How are we coping with that in, in terms of when kids get sick?
So, Mr. Mayor, part of what we talked about earlier was the network of supports that we're providing in the community in partnership with our community providers and community shelter providers and Ottawa Public Health. And so the network, both in physical distancing, our shelters, our family shelters, we have moved out a significant number of families out of that shelter and produced or made capacity for isolation within that for families who may contract COVID in our family shelters. We've been also using a whole network of hotels and secondary residences that we use to ensure that both families, women fleeing abuse and single individuals have a place to both self-isolate and then for physical distancing as well. So we believe right now with the spaces that we have, we are still able to maintain that capacity and have been able to use those centers both for individuals living in shelters, in our family shelters, but also in our residential, all of our residential and congregate living arrangements that the city funds and, and supports. We are predicting as a result of the research and an increase in, in need, and that's part of the plan that I had mentioned earlier in my comments around the work that we're doing with the provincial funding that has been announced recently. How do we expand those services and enhance those services moving forward?
Thank you. And I'm glad you mentioned domestic violence, because I think that's something that we haven't talked about, but we know that there's much more risk in these situations. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. And just to follow up councillor Kavanaugh, one of the issues that the federal minister spoke about was the, the federal government had announced funding for a self-isolation centre in Toronto and that we would be eligible for that to be paid for by the federal government if the need arises. So I think our staff are aware that that offer is out there and obviously if we continue to see the numbers going up, there'll be more need for people to self-isolate. And we appreciate the federal government's support on that. Okay, so thank you, Dr. Etches, very much, and councillor Egli. And if you could pass along our sincere thanks to your staff and the dedicated employees of Public Health. They've done a remarkable job under very, very difficult circumstances. So we'll go through the consent agenda and then we have the Lands Development Corporation presentation in just a moment. So committee reports, Rapport des Comités, Built Heritage Subcommittee Report Number Fifteen, Subcommittee de Patrie et Moins Batsy, application to alter 235 Mariposa Avenue, located in the Rockcliffe Park Heritage District. And we have a motion, technical amendment by councillor King, second by councillor Brockington. My understanding this is something was left off the, the original report councillor King, and you're going to move this? Are you on mute councillor?
It might be frozen, what?
Yeah, I think councillor, it might be frozen, I'm told, so not literally. So where is the Built Heritage Subcommittee approved motion BHSC 2020 15-1 at its meeting of September 8th, replacing the plans by Jim Bell Architectural Designs dated July 9th, 2020, received on July 14th, 2020, with those plans dated and received September 3rd, 2020, as reflection in the committee recommendations to council. And whereas in the interest of transparency, a copy of the September 3rd, 2020 plans may be appended as a supporting document to the Built Heritage Subcommittee. Therefore, be it resolved that document 11 attached to this motion be formally added to Built Heritage Subcommittee Report Fifteen reflecting the revised plans dated and received September 3rd, 2020. And there are a number of architectural drawings and photographs on this. So on the, the amendment by councillor King and Brockington, carried?
Carried.
And on the, and on the report, item two of Built Heritage Subcommittee Fifteen as amended, carried?
Carried.
Community and Protective Services Committee Report Number Thirteen, Rapport numéro treize du Comité des Services Communitaires de Protection, Ottawa Fire Services 2019 Annual Report, that it be received. Received?
Received.
Item four, amendments to enhance the enforcement of the Smoking and Vaping Bylaw Number 2019 Two Four One. Carried?
Carried.
Adopted. Item five, Crime Prevention Ottawa Annual Action Report 2019, Rapport d'Action 2019 de Prevention de Crime Ottawa. The council received this report. Carried?
Received.
Received, I'm sorry. Item six, potential solid waste partnership, Eventuelle Partenariat Relatif au Déchet Solid. This is with our neighbors in North Grenville, on the report.
Carried.
Carried?
Carried.
Sorry, did someone say they wanted to hold that? Nope, okay. Item number seven, 2019 Drinking Water Quality Management System Report, Rapport de l'Examen de la Diction et Plan en Vertu de la Norme de la Gestion de la Qualité de l'eau 2019. Received this report? Received?
Received.
Planning Committee Report Number Twenty Nine, R4 Zoning Review Phase Two. Councillor Brockington, I believe you have a direction to staff?
Mayor, can you hold this one?
Okay, we'll come back. Item number nine, Application to Alter 175 Main Street Property Designated Under Part Four of the Ontario Heritage Act.
Carried.
Carried. And item ten and eleven deal with it as well, zoning bylaw 205 Scholastic Drive, Modification Reglement de Zonage De Cent Cinq, Permanente Scholastic. Carried?
Carried.
Carried.
Item eleven, zoning bylaw amendment 360 De Chasse-Laye Avenue, Modification Reglement de Zonage. Carried?
Carried.
Item twelve, zoning bylaw amendment, official plan amendment 2740 Cedar View Road, 4190, 4200, 4210 and 4236 Fallowfield Road. Carried?
Carried.
Item thirteen, zoning bylaw amendment 3030 St. Joseph Boulevard, Modification Reglement de Zonage 3030 Boulevard St. Joseph. Carried?
Carried.
Item fourteen, zoning bylaw amendment 6102 Renault Road, Modification Reglement de Zonage 6102 Chemin Renault. Carried?
Carried.
Transit Commission Report Number Six, Rapport numéro six de la Commission de Transports En Commun, item fifteen, 2020 Transit Operating Capital Budget Q2 Status Report and COVID-19 Financial Mitigation Strategies. Carried?
Carried.
Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? No? On the bulk consent agenda as presented, carried?
All carried.
Okay, so we'll head back now. Apologize to Pamela Sweet, who's the Chair of the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation, their obligation to report to the shareholder, which is the City of Ottawa, on their 2019 annual report. So Ms. Sweet, thank you for taking on this leadership role. I believe you have five or so slides and you're supported by Derek Moody, Secretary and Chief Operating Officer of OCLDC. The floor is yours, Ms. Sweet.
Yes. Okay. Good afternoon and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's my honor to present some highlights from the report of the Ottawa Community Land Development Corporation. It's the annual report, but this year we're also recognizing that it's the 10th anniversary of OCLDC. You can go to the next slide, please. So this year we managed to sell two properties in Kanata for a total of 5.76 million, and that goes, of course, to the shareholder, City of Ottawa. And of that, 366,000 was directed to affordable housing. And over the past 10 years, there's been quite a few major achievements. 91 million gross sales, 30 surplus properties sold, 12 development projects ranging from residential right through to industrial commercial. And one of the objectives of the OCLDC is to create opportunities for small and niche builders. They basically want to give opportunities to groups who maybe could not bid on land, like places of worship. So also, one of the most significant developments over that period of the last 10 years was the Longfield Demonstration Subdivision Plan in Imbarhaven, which was 50 hectares and developed from a greenfield to a master plan community. And in addition to affordable housing, the, the fund itself, the Affordable Housing Land Fund, was given 3.6 million. So typically, 25% of the net revenues from sales of residential and mixed-use owned land goes to the affordable housing. Next slide, please. So here are some examples of infill and the type of development that has been facilitated over the last 10 years. You have emphasis on human scale, existing character, neighborhood characters such as setting back the garages, having front porch, trying to encourage high-quality building materials. The one at the top left is 25 at Squallmount, and then the one on the right is an infill project in the Crystal Beach neighborhood, which was originally a water tower and a school. These are infill projects that are able to go into low-density neighborhoods to try to facilitate compatible intensification. The Longfield subdivision is the one at the bottom right, and that, as I mentioned earlier, was one of the biggest projects. So next slide. was one of the biggest projects. So next slide, please. And just to illustrate the number of developers that were facilitated to be builders here, you'll see that a number of them are smaller builders. We wanted to try to encourage the variety of products, so we didn't have the homogeneous development, and the variety of housing also caters to a wider demographic, and tries to minimize the commuting and car dependency in the community. Next slide. So again, some design guideline examples, front porches, rear laneway garages have been experimented with. There's high-quality building materials. In the bottom middle is a transit courtyard that has been partially developed to encourage transit-oriented development. This is all in the Longfields area. And then finally, mixed-use buildings. So you have a combination of residential, commercial in one building, and the commercial's been proving to be very popular in this area. Next slide, please. So this is the final slide, and it just shows some of the community uses that have been facilitated in the various parts of the city. There's an integrated water, it's called Water Shield Park and Stormwater Management, that's in the upper left. In Longfield, there is a community center with a park to the right in that area, and also the protection of 17 hectares of heavily wooded woodland, which is the one on the left middle. In addition, we were able to facilitate the building of the South Napean Muslim Community Place of Worship. And in the bottom two slides, this shows the haven development in Longfield, which is affordable housing for multi-faith co-op. It has townhouses, two small apartment buildings, a community space, outdoor playground, community garden, and provides 98 units of affordable housing. And just in final summary, I want to thank the members of the board, Kathleen Willis, who's the Vice Chair, directors Laura Dudas, councillor and director Jan Harder, councillor and director Rolson King, and Mayor Mott Watson. In addition, I want to thank staff who've put a lot of work into this, and I would also just like to, in summary, thank you for the opportunity to serve on this board. Thank you.
Well, it's our opportunity to thank you, Ms. Sweet. I know a lot of work goes into these board meetings, and we really appreciate your contribution, and that of the board members, both private citizens and members of council, so thank you. Does anyone have -- oh, councillor, I see some hands up here. Councillor Brockington on questions to OLDC?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Sweet, for your presentation and for your service on this board. Can you remind council what the objective or goal is for the corporation as far as bringing in revenues per year or this term of council? What are you aiming towards?
My understanding is there is a goal of $5 million per year, which I believe has been met almost all through the last 10 years, and will be met this year, obviously, and hopefully in the upcoming years.
I noted in your report you have a few other properties listed, which you hope to close on in 2020 or early 2021. Do you have the capacity to take on more properties for sale?
I'm going to let staff answer that one. I think they're better to answer that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry?
Thank you, Your Worship. Feedback going in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about the feedback. Yeah, in response to the question, yes, we have the capacity to take on additional work, and we are on track with the projects.
There's a lot of feedback.
So
Sorry.
Mayor, can you turn your mic off?
So I think if people can turn their mics off, and I'm not sure if there's a problem with the mic that you're using, but go ahead. Caitlin thinks she knows what it is. What is it?
If Ms. Sweet turns down the volume on her laptop, I think the feedback is coming through staff's microphone, or else use her machine to answer the questions.
Go ahead. Sorry, we're not hearing you. Are you on mute? There we go.
Sorry, I was muted.
Go ahead.
Okay, yes, we, in response, we are on track to deliver our 2020 target. We listed a bunch of properties which we tabled with the board earlier this year, and we are on target to produce the $5.5 million that's required of the OCLDC. So in response, yes. Obviously, we are, given the current situation we're in, we are, some of the purchases, some of the sales will be impacted by that, and we may be looking at potentially extending the closing dates for some of those transactions. So most of them are on track to close at the end of 2020. We haven't heard of anybody looking to extend it to 2021 at this point in time.
So just to clarify, my last question is, you take over once council declares city property surplus to our needs, is that correct? You're not recommending properties that the city holds to become surplus, and then they move over to you. That has to come from another body within the corporation which council endorses, and then they turn over those properties to you, is that correct?
That's correct, Your Worship. So the process for declaring properties surplus and transferring to the OCLDC requires it to go to finance, the Fedco, and then council ultimately approves that. And of course, that has full participation with the board councillors.
Sure. Okay, so can I ask the city manager then, what type of review is done on a cyclical basis to look at underutilized properties, making sure no other party within the corporation needs those properties, and eventually declaring them surplus? What frequency is that being done to ensure that we're not holding on to land we have absolutely no need for now or in the future?
Well, there's actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's actually a very aggressive review on all our property holdings now that's being reviewed. And for more detail, Steve Willis is on the line. Him and I have been talking about the progress that we've been making now with Creel in terms of identifying that to bring back with council. Steve could maybe want to give some more details to councillor Brockington? Steve Willis?
Sorry, is Mr. Willis on the line? Nope. So I think
I don't know what happened to him, I'm not
Maybe, oh, he is. Steve Willis? Nope. All right, well, I think we'll have to get Mr. Willis to follow up with councillor Brockington. He seemed to have a connection problem. Anything else, councillor Brockington? Okay, councillor
No, I just wanted to ask my question. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I sat on the board of Ottawa Lands in the last term of council, and I was disappointed at the low achievement that we've had in terms of generating affordable housing and dollars for affordable housing. When I take a look at the numbers that were presented by Ms. Sweet this afternoon, I don't think it reflects the exploiting the full potential of these properties to accomplish not just revenue generation, which obviously is one of the corporation's mandates, but also the creation of affordable housing. I think we're getting interesting projects, for sure, but there's a key chunk of the corporation's mandate that I don't think is being accomplished to the extent that it could be. I just wonder to hear from Ms. Sweet and others. We have declared a housing crisis in the city. To what extent is that lens being applied to the activities of the corporation?
Oh, Mr. Moody can answer that?
Mr. Mayor, it's Steve Willis here. I'll start by answering this question, just because it's not OCLDC's mandate to get into the question of policy that councillor Leeper is asking. Once council declares, under current policy, a property surplus, OCLDC puts lands up for marketing, and a proportion of the proceeds, the 25%, is directed to affordable housing. So OCLDC's mandate's limited. So I think the question is, what you're asking is really a policy question with respect to the city's approach to its housing program, and Ms. Gray and I work regularly with each other. It is part of the implementation questions that are coming out of the Tenure Housing and Homelessness Plan. Ms. Gray may have more to add on this, but I think that question is not, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, is not an OCLDC question.
Right, councillor Leeper?
No, and I'll accept that from Steve. The, so I think, you know, this is something that we do need to talk more about. The lack of dollars that are being generated for affordable housing when we have an affordable housing crisis is very much on my mind, and I don't think that we should be looking to OCLDC to primarily be a revenue-driving agency. I know that it has a broader mandate than just revenue generation, and my urging to the members of that board are to take a look at the declaration that we've made, and to make sure that that is a key lens through which they're looking when they're making those disposal decisions. Thank you.
Councillor Fleury, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm interested in following up on the same range of questions as councillor Leeper. I wonder if Mr. Moody or Mr. Willis can answer, but when I do the calculation, over the last 10 years, we've pulled $91 million into the city due to these sales, of which $3.6 million have gone to affordable housing, that's just under 4%. But when there was a policy change at some point that required that 25% of those total go into the affordable housing accounts, can we just get clarification as to, I mean, from the last, from the presentation we're seeing today, we're far from the 25% objectives?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Dan Aswar to answer that question, because it is a question of the timing of the change in council's policy.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, we're happy to get the clarification on the exact timing of that report, where the policies were implemented, potentially even before the end of council. It's not at our fingertips right now, but I think it's worth noting as well that not all of the projects that go through OCLDC are residential or qualify for the 25%.
Okay.
Okay, well, maybe this is something that we could ask for, that I can ask for briefing with staff on, because I am of the same mindset, I believe, as councillor Leeper, that we own the asset and want to generate wealth to residents of Ottawa, or to the city of Ottawa, and that includes using our tools to increase the amount of affordable units that are built, or generating the revenue to be able to build more affordable units. So I'll follow up with Mr. Moody on the matter.
Mr. Mayor, if I may suggest, we can provide a follow-up memo on the breakdown over time of the time the policy changed and what's happened. We'll provide that to all council members.
Councillor Menard, please.
Thanks very much, Mayor, and thanks for the report. I wanted to ask around the sale of land that we own around transit stations. I'm wondering if you're selling any parcels of land in proximity of a few kilometers within LRT or BRT stations within the city?
Mr. Mayor, just quickly, in response to that question, the station location areas that were identified last year, there's been no direction from Fedco to turn those over to OCLDC at this stage, so that none of them are for sale but through OCLDC.
And outside of the station locations identified last year, any near BRT that have been sold recently, or prospective to be sold?
Mr. Mayor, the report that we brought through last year looked at both LRT and BRT locations, sort of major, high-order public transit locations, and so all of those were flagged last year. They, OCLDC does not have any of those parcels.
Yeah, I just want to be sure, because that report around maintaining our potential for affordable housing sites is obviously extremely important, and it's not just those sites in that report, there's other stations as well that we need to be concerned with that may come into play in the future. And if we're selling off assets, we just want to make sure those are maintained, given inclusionary zoning potential, but, you know, our potential for affordable housing. So I appreciate that, and just want to make sure we're flagging that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor McKennie, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to pick up on some of the questioning around affordable housing. I look forward to the detail around the last 10 years and what was attributed to the affordable housing account. But just in terms of 2019, if somebody could just explain that, what I understand, we sold, or OCLDC sold, two properties on Campo Drive for a total of $5.76 million. How was the three, how was the $366,530 arrived at? It just seems like a fraction of what was sold, and there's only these two properties. So I'm having a hard time understanding why it's so low, and what the, you know, what was attributed to that? Like, is it because it's not all residential?
So, Your Worship, the proceeds that were provided to the Affordable Housing Fund was 25% of the net revenues. So that's after the sale, we take off any costs incurred in preparing planning studies or preparing the property for sale. So that's how we arrived at the $366,000.
So do you have the net amount from this sale of $628,500, $629,500? That's quite a delta in terms of gross and net, if $366,000 is 25% of the net sale?
I don't have that at my fingertips, councillor, but I can, we can certainly provide that to you.
Okay, that would be, that would be great. I'd like to see it, and maybe in the future, for these future reports, we can get that kind of detail built into them, just so that we can look through and understand how the affordable housing account is being attributed.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So on the council docket, it's received the audit financial statements, appoint Ernst &amp; Young as the auditor. On the motion, carried?
Yes.
Thank you again, Ms. Sweet. The one item that was held is R4 Zoning Review Phase Two, Revision de Zonage R4 Phase Deux. So before we begin, maybe councillor Brockington, you can bring forward your direction to staff, which I understand they're comfortable with.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We reached a compromise on my concerns about parking, and the following directions are now provided. That staff are directed to monitor development in interurban R4 zones after coming into force of the R4 Phase Two amendments, with particular attention to any parking issues arising from multi-unit development without onsite parking. And second, the second direction that staff explore, facilitating or expanding the residential on-street parking permit program in R4 areas where multi-unit development is permitted without onsite parking, beginning with policy support in the new official plan without onsite parking, beginning with policy support in the new official plan currently under development. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, councillor King on the report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll try not to freeze up this time, hopefully. I'd like really to take this opportunity to commend staff for the work that they've undertaken during the comprehensive review of R4 zoning, which tremendously impacts Ottawa's inner-urban wards. In particular, I'd like to thank Mr. Mormon, who has been patient and communicative with my office and Ward 13 residents. The review has been thorough and comprehensive, and the report before us on Phase Two is the culmination of more than four years of work by staff to address the critical need to establish standards for low-rise residential buildings. Critically, this review is designed to ensure that new R4 zone buildings are constructed to complement established communities and fit within their urban context. A great concern to many residents of Ward 13 is the consolidation of lots to build large buildings, which are inappropriate to the character of the street. This is of particular concern in Overbrook, where the lot widths and depths are more generous than in other places throughout the urban core. To be clear, though, I do not object to intensification. In fact, I welcome it and understand how integral it is to the health and vibrancy of our city. I'm gratified that some of the design changes within the report will help mitigate the issues of buildings that are blocked off from the street by increasing administration, upholding the rhythm of doors and maintaining greenery that enhance and contribute to the look and feel of our neighborhoods. However, there's intensification that contributes, and there's also intensification that detracts. And there is a continuing worry that where there is potential to build a larger building and cram basically more units in, that this will occur regardless of the impact it has on neighborhoods. Another concern I've heard from the community is ensuring that there is a wide variety of unit types available to renters. This serves a dual purpose. Firstly, the social mix of a neighborhood is enhanced when there is different units available for rent that caters to both individuals and families. Currently, most units that are constructed only cater to singles, thereby leaving little choice for families who would rather opt to rent apartments in the urban core. If we want to be serious about 15-minute neighborhoods in our new official plan, we will need to ensure young families have rental options. Additionally, as homeownership becomes less accessible due to escalating costs, there will be a need for apartments within our urban core for people who cannot afford to buy but do not want to live further away. I have also, I also continue to remain concerned about the lack of infrastructure to support increased R4 development. While we want to foster 15-minute neighborhoods, it will be important to cite apartments on streets with proper amenities to support active transportation. Some inner-core neighborhoods are experiencing R4 densification on streets with outside walks that can facilitate a walk to and from transit infrastructure. Streets that are not pedestrian and bicycle-friendly are not helping us attain the 15-minute neighborhood goal. Thus, while I believe the zoning review moves in the right direction concerning building apartments that complement the character of communities and attempt to encourage the increase of rental supply to increase affordability, my direction to staff today will ask that they review and report back on these key, critical community concerns, which focus on the number of units on a consolidated lot, about the amount of family units, and about the necessary infrastructure required to support intensification. Reporting back will provide my community with the data it needs in advance of anticipated changes to R4 zones, zoning that will come about as a result of the new official plan to assess whether stronger safeguards are required. If the gentle intensification that contributes to the walkability of our neighborhoods and that enhances our street scapes are needed and required, then we should have the right components to really undertake that. So, Mr. Mayor, my direction to staff is that the general manager of Planning, Infrastructure and Economic Development report back to council 18 months after the amendments to the R4 zones come into force. As to one, the number of applications on consolidated lots within study areas defined in the R4 zoning review. Number two, the number of units to be built on these consolidated lots. Number three, the number of applications on these lots that require a variance seeking relief from setbacks in order to accommodate more units. And number four, the number of units throughout the study area to be proposed that are greater than two bedrooms in both actual number and percentage of all units being built. Further, I ask that staff incorporate into the work being done around the official plan a clear analysis of the projected intensification pressures to occur within the original study area, and that when examining the transition of existing communities to a walkable neighborhood, an inventory of required hard and soft infrastructure to support this intensification is completed.
All right, you finished right on time. One second left. We'll need to get that in writing, councillor King and Mr. Willis. Is that acceptable to you? Or does it require a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think it requires a motion. I think we can take the spirit of the intent, and I can work with the councillor on it. There are tools in both in the official plan, the infrastructure master plan, and transportation master plan that are all relevant to this. So, we'll work with the spirit of what the council is looking for in terms of feedback and monitoring, and it will be a continual report back on progress and on the R4 implementation.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Menard, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have two directions that I worked with staff on that I want to present today on the R4, and they've been written with staff. I can also send them through separately. The first direction is in respect to inclusionary zoning. Staff have confirmed that any R4 zones located geographically within protected major transit station areas would be subject to an inclusionary zoning regime developed by the city, and this would be subject to the limits and restrictions on inclusionary zoning imposed by provincial law and regulation, and that inclusionary zoning can only apply to buildings of 10 or more units. And so, the direction is that staff are directed to ensure in the development of inclusionary zoning policies and zoning that the resulting inclusionary zoning regime also apply to any R4 zones located within the designated protected major transit station areas to the extent permitted by provincial law. That's the first. And I can go into the second now. The second is around the green roof structures that we're hoping to see in more of these R4s, and it's that staff are directed to include requirements for green roofs in the scope of the new comprehensive zoning bylaw to be developed starting in 2021 and/or the high-performance standards that will come on as part of climate change master plan and energy evolution. So, I'll leave those two, and I believe those are both acceptable by staff.
Mr. Willis, any comments on those two motions?
Now, Mr. Mayor, the general manager has asked me to reply on his behalf. Staff doesn't have any concerns with accommodating those requests.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much to particularly David and Tim for the work that they've done on this. This is highly controversial. It's interesting, the urban councillors are speaking to this and trying to bring various directions at this stage, because we are the wards that are going to be the most affected by this. It is the near downtown neighborhoods that are going to see the biggest changes. The neighbors are concerned about R4. This isn't universally popular. Sorry, Mayor, may I just ask you to turn your mic off? No, it's, thank you. The neighbors are concerned about this. We're worried about exacerbating gentrification trends when we incentivize greater density. But by and large, what you heard is a planning committee, is that we understand the direction this is taking. I've been in probably two weeks now of controversial development open houses. We're no stranger to them in Kitchessipi, and we're being asked at each one of these, is the city planning on changing its approach to intensification in light of COVID? And my answer has been the same every night. We are, we have to continue the intensification thrust. We know the importance of intensification for trying to achieve affordable housing and for addressing climate change, and the directions that the official plan are moving in are the right ones. But one of the key things that we hear is that that intensification has to be across the city. You know, it can't just be the near downtown neighborhoods that bear the brunt of intensification. It needs to be everywhere. And in the past few weeks, we've seen, the property on Grenon was approved with a very appropriate intensification plan. We've seen the tower that we approved today in councillor Lulov's ward. Again, a very appropriate intensification that isn't immediately downtown. We know we're going to see more of these, and my ask of my colleagues is to continue approving intensification right across the city so that it's not just a Hintonburg or a Vanier or an Overbrook issue. I do have several commitments that I'm looking for from staff, and I can write these up as direction if that's considered appropriate. I'll just run through them and just confirm that staff are okay with these. First, I would like to hear a commitment from staff that they will encourage the use of front balconies or French balconies in site plan discussions with these new R4 buildings. I'll be asking staff to ensure that the staff who are providing comments to the Committee of Adjustment are well-trained and coordinated to the new policy. I'm looking for a commitment that they will use the same kind of landscaping first language or approach that is coming forward at Planning Committee tomorrow with respect to the infill tweaks with respect to the rear yards for R4, that when variances are coming forward, they're taking a look at landscaping first as the key thrust to their comments with the Committee of Adjustment. Thank you very much to councillor King for raising the reporting back within 18 months. That's something my community is also seeking. And finally, I do want to ask staff to please explain why there is no minimum required amenity space associated with the R4. Neighbors are very concerned that rear yards are going to get varied smaller and that we're going to lose green space by the time we've put things like bike racks and garbage storage in rear yards. What's going to give is green space. Why are we not seeking a minimum required amenity area? So, those are my commitments that I'm looking for from staff and that question. Thank you, Mayor.
So, response from staff, please.
Mr. Mayor, it's on behalf of the general manager. Staff does not have concerns with the directions that councillor Leeper has proposed with respect to the balconies, Committee of Adjustment, and also the landscaping first directions. With respect to the amenity areas, Mr. Mayor, the package actually provides a much more functional breakdown of where that amenity package was before. Amenity areas were very coarse and very broad measurement. The R4 report now divides that into clear requirements for functional areas for waste storage and bicycle storage, for areas that are devoted and required in terms of an area specified for soft landscaping and providing the opportunity for trees, and those are scaled directly to the size of the lot. So, we feel that the amenity area, which was a very broad calculation, has in fact been refined and is much more functional and is much more tied to the actual needs of a low-rise apartment. So, we do feel that amenity area has been provided. It is not the name amenity area, but it is in effect there within the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you to staff. And so, my ask of staff as they go into the comprehensive zoning bylaw review is to continue the intensification thrust, not just in these R4 neighborhoods, but carry through these principles in all of our zones across the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Flory, please.
I also want to thank the team that worked on this project. I will not support it today, though.
On the R4, as you know, the majority of my community, Lower Town, Sandy Hill and Vanier, are zoned R4. We are seeing very different infill types because of the high rental area that we hold and cherish. We started on the R4, there's been two phases, and the first phase was really a look into resolving bunkhouses. And the unit cap or the bedroom cap that was initiated as part of that first phase was a very good and important step to increase the diversity of units that are provided within various geographic areas that I represent. Staff at committee highlighted how a particular area in my community has economic distortion. And I brought forward a motion at committee that was not carried, that was not supported, to protect the particular area that is Sandy Hill, specifically the junior R4 zones, which currently have a cap on the amount of units in that junior zones to four. We've done all this work as part of Phase One, and what I'm noticing is Phase Two is taking a broader view into many of the residential zones in core areas. That's great, but I would have loved for that, that wider review to take context past the official plan, past the extension of the R4 zones, which is likely as highlighted by councillor Leeper. One of the measures that staff bring forward, and I continue to raise or ask, for example, is the question of affordability. A lot of elements in the report point to affordability. I agree that from a general standpoint, we need to see amounts of rental across the city and all neighborhoods built, and that overall that will create vacancies, which will make the rental availability more competitive. But I challenge that these measures, and I hope that we're able to dive into certain neighborhoods and get what is the square footage value of the rental. I'm seeing a lot of bachelors, I'm seeing a lot of one bedrooms, and when I look at the square footage rents these units go to, they're certainly not affordable. Finally, and to raise many of the points that urban colleagues have raised, it's great to see infill. We recognize our role and responsibility in intensification, but we're not seeing the levels of amenity increases and improvements that we would require. The newest urban facility in terms of recreation is Pond Recreation Centre, and that was the last council prior to amalgamation that brought that forward. We're seeing more and more residents in the core, and yet we offer the same level of recreation programs and infrastructure. Very similar challenges on transit, great improvement to the LRT, but the local routes remain a big challenge, winter maintenance, for example. So, I would have wished, to summarize, I'll be voting against, there's important elements in there, I wish they had wider implications in line with the OP, and I would have hoped for Planning Committee to support my local need in Sandy Hill by its proximity to the economic distortion that staff highlighted to the university and the particular element of creating a missing middle for families and student spaces at the same time. Thank you.
Merci. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do also want to thank staff, Dave, Tim, for the work that was done on this report, and also to our communities. There was a lot of attention paid to this, communities in the urban wards, our community associations came out, they inputted into this report, and that was on their own time and made differences in the outcome. So, I will be supporting the report today and the recommendations in the report. We do want to see an increased supply of housing in the downtown. Supply alone will not make units affordable. Nothing to back that up that I've ever seen, but we do also need supply for families to move into the downtown, for individuals to live in the downtown if they so choose. But we also need to keep our eye on affordability, and we need to keep our eye on the work that Ottawa Community Housing is doing in many of our wards to ensure that we have affordable stock and affordable supply. And, you know, if we think about the outcome of R4 in our neighborhoods, you know, to be honest, there aren't many people, developers, purchasing red brick homes in Centertown and knocking them down. Infill has not been an issue in Centertown. That doesn't mean that it won't happen, that we won't get some eight, 10, 12-unit buildings. But what we need to go along with this type of built form, high-rises, which still make up more than half of our housing stock, is amenities to go along with it. And I know that, you know, my... And I know that, you know, my colleagues have mentioned that. But, you know, the other day I was on at the AGM by Zoom with Good Companion Senior Centre, and just that is an example of what is required to ensure that people are able to live a healthy lifestyle, to stay in their neighborhood, to stay in their homes. They need smaller units, they need to be able to move within their community, but they also need to be able to walk safely, they need clear sidewalks in the winter, they need to be able to move about, senior cycle, and they need good local transit, they need green space, they need trees, and we need families to live downtown. And for that to happen, you know, we need to make sure that we have two and three bedroom units being built. So, you know, the directions that have been provided by my colleagues, I support, it's part of the reason I will support this report and its recommendations. And, you know, we do need to see the report back in 18 months, but in 18 months, we have to see and we have to be, we have to demonstrate to residents that we're actually serious about a housing emergency, we're actually serious about providing units to families. We're at risk of losing schools in the downtown because we've, you know, we've lost families in some of our lower income neighborhoods. So those are the things that, you know, in 18 months from now, if we come back and we're in the same space and we are not, you know, we're not any further on inclusionary zoning, talking about it for years, we're not any further on ensuring affordability, working with our federal and provincial partners to make sure that we have housing allowances that are available to make these units affordable. If we're not any further ahead on ensuring that we've got, you know, walkable communities, cleared sidewalks in the winter, it'll be, I think, a different discussion at the time. So, you know, we've got some time, let's make sure that we do this right. People are committed to it, and we're all ready to roll up our sleeves and do our part. On that, I'll leave it with that and look forward to the review and report back. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone. The colleagues that have spoken on this very important policy are the ones absolutely most impacted, some way more than others, but it is unique to your communities and your comments and your hard work, each of you, in getting us to today is really, really important. So I want to thank you. At the same time, I really want to thank the communities and the larger communities, the people that actually live, work and play in your part of this wonderful city. They have been dedicated to trying to get this right. The good thing about today is it's not the end of the road. Councillor King was talking about a review in 18 months. This Planning Committee tomorrow, the very first item is the zoning changes to regulate residential development in the urban area within the Green Belt. And we first had that before, I think it was back in May, and we punted it till this meeting tomorrow because it just, we just needed more work. And that came to our attention through the meeting that we started to have back in May. So we did defer it. But it is a review of Infill One and Two, which those policies at different times in 2015 were approved by council of that time. So rest assured that our staff do not sit back and rest on their laurels and just chalk one off of the old work plan and say, that's the end of that, we're not looking at it anymore. You know, in particular, I think, in councillor Flurry, he's very hard on the R4, and he has unique neighborhoods that are impacted in different ways, and certainly Sandy Hill is the one that he really tried to go further than I think any of us were ready to take it. Certainly, we were happy to confirm approvals that we'd already made on waste and on rooftop amenities and that heritage survey, because you have so many pieces of heritage there. But commonizing it not just for looks, but definitely for age, that will take place, that staff have committed to, those are all important. Is this the end of the road for R4? Absolutely not. But I wanted to thank the industry as well, who has sat at the table with our, all of our community associations, our community service groups, our Ottawa Community Housing and other affordable housing players in the immediate area, who have really, I think, given it their very best to get to today. It's absolutely important for me to thank Tim Mormon and David Wise. They have done a tremendous job. That's why Mr. Willis had David Wise speaking for him today. They have put heart and soul into it. So I hope that you will support it. I hope you will realize that it's not the end of the conversation. It may in fact be sort of halfway through the conversation when we see how things turn out, but we'll know that when we report back. And in the meantime, if something needs to be flagged, I know any of you or each of you will just do that. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, councillor Harder. Thank you for your good work, hard work, and that of the committee. On the report, carried?
I consent. Carried.
Sorry, councillor Flurry, councillor Flurry's dissenting?
Right.
Councillor Flurry?
Yes, that's what I said, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Motion to adopt reports, motion important adoption of the report. Councillor Elshantiri, please.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. The report from Ottawa Community Land Development Corporation entitled Ottawa Community Land Development Corporation 2019 Annual Report, Built Heritage Subcommittee Report 15, Community and Protective Service Committee Report 13, Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water and Waste Management Report 10, Planning Committee Report 29, Transit Commission Report Six, and the report from the City Clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for the Item Subject to Planning Act Explanation Requirement at the City Council Meeting of September 9, 2020, be received and adopted as amended.
On the motion, carried, adopted, merci. Motions of which notice has been previously given, excuse me, motions dont avait été donnés entièrement. Councillor McKenney, seconded by myself on Boushee Square, I believe it's called. Councillor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read out the motion at the last meeting, but essentially it's to rename Waverley Square, which is at the corner of Waverley and Elgin, just on the west side of Elgin, to Boushee Square. And I don't think anybody here, I don't think I've had to explain to anyone where the name Boushee comes from. You know, the Boushees are, you know, one of the key families in our city, helped to build our city into what it is, but certainly their impact on Elgin Street with Boushee Food Market. And just, you know, I want to also say, it wasn't just the food market. Since I put this motion forward, I've had so many people contact me to tell me stories about the generosity of this family, even today through COVID. They are landlords on Elgin, and some of the outreach that they've done and what they've done for their tenants and what they continue to do to ensure that people are okay in the city and that they have their needs met and that we will continue to have a strong and vibrant traditional main street, which is Elgin, really has to be, it can't be overstated. Also, I'm sure we can all share stories, but, you know, heard many of them, share many of them about, you know, people got in touch, said, you know, as soon as I moved to Ottawa to go to Ottawa U, where I went and, you know, got my food every night, people would go back to my department store. You know, so it's, the impact of this family really, as I say, can't be overstated, and that square, I believe that square is going to turn into, it's a great entrance to the street, pedestrianizing that area, it's an entrance into Jack Purcell Park, what we have a school and, you know, tennis courts and dog parks. It just, I believe it's going to become, you know, one of the key landmarks in the downtown. So I'm really honored to be able to bring this forward, honored to know the Boushee family, to have worked with Howa in particular over the last several years as we redeveloped Elgin Street, to know her very well. And I look forward to your support on council for this renaming. We will all get an invitation to the reopening of Elgin, and we'll have the unveiling of the plaque at that time.
Great, thank you, councillor. Anyone else wish to speak to the motion? So on the motion, carried, adopted, merci. Congratulations. Next motion is by councillor Dudas, seconded by councillor Cloutier, please. Councillor Dudas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I as well read out this motion at last council meeting, and this motion is really about updating the city's code of conduct and helps simplify how councillors, commissioners and board members should comport themselves online. We've had policies on workplace harassment and a code of conduct respecting staff, there are guidelines for examples on how email communication should be handled. This motion is about closing the loop and bringing our policies into the modern era, joining cities like Toronto, Edmonton, Kingston, Waterloo, even Calgary, as well as nearly all major corporations and organizations in implementing a social media code of conduct and really finessing what that means. You know, I want to thank staff for working incredibly hard on this over the last couple of months and helping craft this motion, but I also want to thank particularly members on council, because I've had an opportunity to speak with quite a number of them, and they've been able to provide their thoughts on this so that we could truly get something to reflect what we need to move forward in a very collaborative and productive fashion and fill in a gap in what is Ottawa's existing policies. So therefore be it resolved that the Integrity Commissioner work closely with the Office of the City Clerk to review the existing code of conduct with the goal of producing an interpretation bulletin specifically addressed social media behaviors by councillors, board and commission members for inclusion in the 2018-2022 midterm governance review report.
Great, thank you, councillor. Does anyone else wish to speak to this item? Thank you, councillor, for your initiative on this, appreciate it. Motion carried?
Carried.
Motion's requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. There's, we have two that I'm aware of. One is moved by councillor Leeper and seconded by myself with respect to some bridge financing for Dover Court. It's timely, obviously, because of the expenses of COVID-19, and this centre is run quite differently than most other community centres. On suspension, carried? Councillor Leeper, if you want to introduce and explain the motion, please.
Carried.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much for your support on this and seconding the motion. I will read it out, just for the benefit of folks who are listening in. Dover Court does find itself in a bind due to the COVID restrictions that are in place. They are obviously a critical partner to the city in providing recreation services and usually in a very innovative and well-received way. I will read the motion, and I'll just ask staff to provide any further details that they feel may be relevant. So the motion is that City Council, oh, sorry, whereas Dover Court Recreation Association has invested over $870,000 towards the expansion of the city-owned Dover Court Recreation Centre, which has been completed earlier this year and will allow additional space for after-school care camps and classes for seniors. If you haven't had a chance, take a look, Barry Hoban Design. Whereas the DRA has utilized its operating reserves to meet the requirements of the expansion project and requires immediate assistance to continue to operate its programming and continue to deliver municipal recreational services. And whereas the DRA's investment has improved the city's recreation infrastructure and their continued management of recreation programming in the community is a significant net benefit to the city of Ottawa. And whereas the forced cancellation of spring and summer programs at the Dover Court Recreation Centre has had a significant negative impact on DRA's revenues, cash flow and overall operating budget, therefore be it resolved that council authorize the Chief Financial Officer to extend a temporary interest-free loan to the DRA in the amount of up to $350,000 repayable within three years in accordance with the terms and conditions established by the Chief Financial Officer to assist with the continued delivery of recreational programming within the Dover Court Recreational Centre. And if I may, I would just ask staff to provide any further color that they feel appropriate.
Mayor, it's Dan Chenier. This, staff support this motion and assisted the councillor in drafting it. It does reflect commitment made to the Dover Court Board pre-COVID, when they agreed to put forward their reserve in order to shore up the escalating costs of this project. Our commitment at the time was to take this to council should they need lifeline in order to maintain operations.
Great, thank you. Councillor Flurry on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll certainly support the motion. Just a question to staff. So all of the commercial providers, Dover Court, an example, Ottawa Rowan Club, we have a bunch, were they, can you confirm they were eligible in the past as part of the federal programs for CRB and leases? It is an issue that we had to confront with the NCC, which they were successful in bridging the gap, but I wonder if it's the same for us at the city? Obviously, I'll be supporting the motion, but just additional context here.
Mr. Mayor, we are aware that Dover Court and many of our other partners have applied both for the wage subsidies as well as any of the other programs, rent subsidies or whatever else has been available. In the case of Dover Court, they had also applied for the community partnership program. So the expansion that we're talking about is a co-funded between city and Dover Court, and in fact, all of the built infrastructure becomes city property going forward and has provided a great expansion.
Great, thank you.
Great, so on the motion, carried, adopted?
Carried.
Next motion requiring suspension of the rules, councillor Menard, seconded, I believe, by councillor Gower. On suspension, carried?
Carried.
Councillor Menard, if you want to introduce the motion?
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Given the great need for this during this time and with the new information from Dr. Etches yesterday, the motion is seeking to make sure that people with low income or who are living paycheck to paycheck have the support they need to do the right thing and stay home when they're sick. The federal funds are there, but the province has not yet committed to introduce this for Ontario workers, and I'm happy to say OPH is supportive of this measure. So the motion reads as follows: Whereas on March 17, 2020, the government of the province of Ontario made an order declaring an emergency under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, with a Q2 ensuring that Ontario had available every power possible to continue to protect the health and safety of all individuals and families. And whereas the province of Ontario subsequently issued a number of orders pursuant to its authority under Section 701, the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act. And whereas on July 24, 2020, the Ontario government enacted the Reopening Ontario, a Flexible Response to COVID-19 Act, thereby terminating the province's COVID-19 declared emergency, but continuing as valid and effective those orders made under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act that had not otherwise been revoked before June 24, 2020, and also reserving a measure of authority necessary to amend and/or continue those orders. Whereas on August 19, 2020, the Decent Work and Healthcare Network issued its report before it's too late how to close the paid sick days gap during COVID-19 and beyond. And whereas that report recommended that all provincial, territorial and federal jurisdictions update their employment standards to require employers to provide... update their employment standards to require employers to provide at least seven days of paid emergency leave on a permanent basis. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic continues to evolve and is causing significant effects across the world and locally here in Ottawa, be it resolved that council direct Mayor Watson to write a letter to Ontario Premier Doug Ford and Minister of Notton requesting that the provincial government immediately establish job-protected sick leave through reg through regulation or legislation that allows workers workers seamless access of up to 10 days leave related to COVID-19. And be it further resolved that council direct Mayor Watson to write a letter to the Prime Minister requesting that the temporary ban Pan-Canadian Sick Leave program made permanent and include expanded seamless access for workers. I can go on, Mr. Mayor, but I'll leave it there with the motion and can comment later if needed.
Okay, thank you. Just two points of clarification. One is, what is the Decent Work and Healthcare Network? I've not heard of that group. Who makes up that group and?
Yeah, so they they, well, they're just a a group that recently released the report that that you for you. I invite you to read it, Mayor, it's a great read. I can go into exactly what the group is made up of, if you'd like, on their website, just a moment.
Sorry, I'm just wondering, who? Sorry, is it made up of hospitals or healthcare workers or unions or what? I've never heard of it, and I've never been sent a copy of the report.
Yes. Staff had staff had inserted that clause in the where it be a result or in the whereas clauses. And we can get you the exact who the group is made up of over email if you'd like.
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
I said we can get you who the group is made up of over email if you'd like. We can go on the website and give you the.
Sure. And then the second thing is, it says they're recommending seven days of paid emergency leave, and then you're recommending another 10 on top of that for 17?
No, no, what what the motion speaks to is up to 10, which is what the federal government has mandated federally and put in place with their framework.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor. Can city staff inform council more about this program? Would the federal government be subsidizing the salaries of workers who would be taking sick leave so that small business owners who are on the brink of filing for bankruptcy right now would not have to be on the hook for these costs?
As the city clerk or solicitor? Sorry, is Mr. O'Connor or Mr. White there?
I am, Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm on the line now, thank you. No, staff have not had an opportunity to review this motion. No one in HR or legal services actually saw the motion before it was tabled by the member and distributed to all members of council.
So, Mr. City Clerk, we as a council have just waived the rules to allow this motion on the floor right now. Does that handcuff my desire to refer this motion back to the next city council meeting two weeks from now?
Not at all, Mr. Mayor.
I would like more information about this program and the impact on small business, and I don't think I'm going to get that information today. So, Mayor, I'd like to move that this motion be referred back to city council in two weeks.
I'll second that.
I will second that if you need.
Sorry, was that Eli?
I will second the motion if you need to second it myself.
Sure. Okay, seconded by councillor Elshantiri.
Mr. Mayor?
So we're now on to deferral. Councillor? Councillor Harder, go ahead.
I just, thank you. I must have been asleep at the switch, but I didn't hear you call and ask us to waive the rules in the first place. I just went right into questions, which I was wondering why we did that. Did we waive the rules in the first place?
We did, and I I asked.
I don't think so.
No, I did, because I I referenced the second one, that we need suspension of the rules after the the previous one on Dover Court. So anyways, it's it's been, there's now a deferral motion. This is to defer it to the next council.
Okay, on deferral?
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I'll speak on deferral.
Go ahead.
So on to furl. As as we heard from staff, this is a surprise to see this, but it's not a surprise because yesterday we saw what went on at Queens Park. So I think that it very much ties into the actions yesterday. I certainly don't think it's our role to be getting, you know, sending something to Queens Park. I think that they're very aware of what's happening in this province, and I think that if they're going to do something, they'll do it. They don't need a letter from Ottawa, and I'm certainly not wanting to discuss it today. So I'd at least like more information, and I will agree with you to the deferral.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hubley on deferral.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I don't honestly think two weeks is enough time. First off, we're told that the member moving this is saying that he consulted with staff. We've now heard from the city clerk, there was no consultation taking place. The last piece of this motion goes beyond us trying to find some help for people with COVID and actually tries to start a brand-new national and provincial program, which I'm not comfortable with us doing this on a motion that we're waiving the rules that it talks about, and nobody's done any research on financial implications and and what this means to the taxpayer as well on the long-term piece. So I think this needs to definitely be referred. I don't think it needs a two-week time limit. I think we have to give staff a chance to do a very fulsome review of what's being proposed here. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Hubley. Just our next meeting's in three weeks because apparently three Wednesdays in or five Wednesdays in October. Councillor Menard on deferral. Or you can agree to have it deferred and we can move on.
I just, I I give you the reason why we brought it forward today, and it's because of the announcement that we've been seeing lately. The announcement yesterday, of course, is having a great effect on on our city. We've seen the federal government come up with this program. They've already instituted it. But some provinces and territories have also taken up those federal federal dollars to institute this in their province and territories. Ontario has not. So BC has done this, other territories have done this. And the federal government plan that exists right now mirrors what we're asking the province to do. And so i- in this case, there is some urgency. We've just heard we want people to get tested and that they need to be able to do that without taking time off their job or doing that where they're not going to be paid during those times. And that's the reason why the federal government had implemented this program i- in the first place as well. And so what this is doing is urging the province to take action and to follow through on the public health guidelines and orders that we've been seeing in order to best mitigate the issues of having to stay home for a length of time if you have any sort of symptoms. And so in this case, I did confirm that Ottawa Public Health is supportive of this motion. I did send it today after, of course, the orders came through yesterday very fast and made sure that the city clerk's office had it before it was tabled, to make sure that we had that type of discussion. And at this point, the only thing that we would be.
Oh, my God.
Sorry, councillor Deans. At this point, the only thing that we would be doing is confirming what the federal government has put in place and asking that to also be enacted in Ontario with an extension, given the great public health need that we have right now. So I I don't think we should be deferring it. I think we should be voting on it today. And that any other implications with regard to your letter, Mr. Mayor, that you end up writing with regard to this, can have those details and edits as we move. We never go through the exact letters in these motions. That comes as you write the letter. So I I think it makes sense to to get this through today and not wait another three weeks when we're asking people to self-isolate if they have any symptoms at this point or get tested. Thanks.
So councillor, you just said OPH supports this. Did it go through the the health board, and is there a motion that you can refer me to?
I'm speaking through the to staff.
Well, that doesn't mean OPH supports it if if a member of staff supports it, it's a process. This is one of the problems we get into with these kinds of motions that are brought to us at the last minute without proper analysis by staff, or we don't even know who this Decent Work and Healthcare Network is. Councillor Gower, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put my name on to second this motion because I think it is important. We've heard multiple times over the past few days from public health officials that it's important for people to stay home when they are sick. And at the same time, I'm getting emails from my residents saying, how can you tell me to stay home when my kids are sick or when I am sick, I'm running out of sick days? We, this motion would instruct the mayor to write a letter. We're not changing policy here. We are not spending any any budget as a city. We are asking the mayor to write a letter to support the overall objectives and message of Ottawa Public Health, so that's why I'm supporting it. I'm just wondering if there's anyone from Ottawa Public Health who could comment on whether they're in general supportive of any government policy that would encourage employers to to increase sick leave and to add policies and programs at other levels of government that would make it easier for businesses to allow sick leave that's necessary to stay home when kids or parents are sick. Is there anyone from Ottawa Public Health who can quickly comment?
Well, I think councillor Eggly, as the chair, is here. Councillor is, do you know any, did you know about this program or this motion?
I do. Point of order, Mr. Mayor? Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, point of order? Councillor Elshantiri?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are talking, we are talking about deferral. And what's on front view right now is deferral, not asking questions to the public health. I need a vote on the deferral first, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think there's some leeway just to clarify what the intent of the motion was. So I've asked councillor Eggly, has this ever come before the board? Is this something that you're aware of?
I'm in your hands, Mr. Mayor. So you're ruling against the point of order there? I can answer the question or?
Yeah, you can, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. No, this did not come forward at the at the last public health board meeting. I think what councillor Menard had indicated, though, the impetus for it was the order that was made by Dr. Etches yesterday and how that's made the the issue more urgent for people. We're saying you need to stay home, and at the same time, in a lot of situations, people are having trouble putting together those sick days or being forced to take days off without pay to meet their needs or the needs of their children in terms of of having the testing done and 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 the possible isolation. So public health's not spoken to it formally, and I'm going to be clear here, so there's no misunderstanding. I'm speaking to this as a member of council at this point. I don't have direction from the board as the chair to speak to it, but but I think there's a cost of connection between why councillor Menard and councillor Gower brought it today, further to the order made yesterday, and and I think we should vote on it today.
Okay, I think to Mr. Katalakis, obviously, some people are suggesting there's no cost to the city, but we would be, as an employer, have to provide those days, and I assume that is a cost to the city.
Well, Mr. Mayor, yeah, you know, first of all, 95% of our workforce is unionized, so it could trigger, and we're in rounds of negotiations now with the with the unions, it could it could affect some of the some of that those discussions, but my preference would be, and I understand, you know, it's obviously the will of council, but it would be nice to have an opportunity to look at it. I just saw this this morning as I was heading to the start of council, and I would appreciate an opportunity for staff to take a look at it and be able to give all of council a perspective on this on this motion.
Okay, I think that's sage advice from our city manager. It's not saying that we're not supporting the intent of the motion. I think we just need to get a few more questions answered. So we have a motion to defer to the next council meeting. This would give staff an opportunity and to go out and reach out to Ottawa Public Health and find out a little bit more about what other jurisdictions are doing. So on deferral, yays and nays, please. Yea to defer and nay to carry on with the debate.
Councillor Deans? Councillor Harder? Councillor Suds?
Yes.
Councillor Gower?
No.
Councillor Moffett? Councillor DeRusse?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
No.
Councillor McKenney?
No.
Councillor Elshantiri?
Yes.
Councillor Fleury?
No.
Councillor Lulov?
Yes.
Councillor King?
No.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Meehan?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Leeper?
No.
Councillor Eggly?
No.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Thirteen yays, eight nays on the floor.
Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notice the motion for consideration at a subsequent meeting. I'd like to move, seconded by councillor Deans, whereas the Ontario Police Services Act currently does not provide for any authority in a chief of police or any oversight body to suspend a police officer without pay when that officer is charged with or convicted of a serious offense under the laws of Canada. And whereas public reports of police officers continuing to receive their full pay while facing charges of serious and even criminal misconduct can diminish public respect for and confidence in the integrity of police services across the province. And whereas the Ontario Government in 2018 introduced the Safer Ontario Act to modernize policing in the province, including provisions for the suspension without pay of police officers who are charged with serious offenses in certain defined cases in order to address these concerns. And whereas the Ontario Association of Chiefs of Police has passed resolutions calling on the Government of Ontario to make the necessary changes to the Police Services Act to allow for the suspension without pay of police officers in situations where they are charged with serious Criminal Code of Canada and other federal offenses not related to their performance of duty and held in custody or when subject to a judicial interim interim release order with such conditions that prevent the officer from carrying out the duties of a police officer or who are charged with serious Police Service Act violations where the chief of police will seek dismissal of the officer. Whereas the Safer Ontario Act was not passed before the provincial election in 2018, whereas identical provisions were later incorporated in the Community Safety Policing Act 2019, which was enacted by the provincial government in March 2019, but which has never been proclaimed in force. Therefore, be it resolved that Ottawa City Council hereby calls on the provincial government to declare and enforce those sections of the Community Safety and Policing Act 2019 as soon as possible that that are necessary to provide chiefs of police or police service boards as applicable with the discretion to suspend a member of the police service without pay who is charged with or convicted of a serious offense in those circumstances set out in the statute. And be it further resolved that Ottawa City Council hereby calls on the provincial government to further amend the legislative scheme governing police services so as to streamline the process for the termination of a police officer who is found guilty of a serious or criminal misconduct. I want to thank councillor Deans for her support on this, and I know that she has communicated this motion to members of the Police Services Board. And also thank past chair Eli Elshantiri, who worked very hard on this issue when he was chair of the Police Service Boards of Ontario. So we'll have a debate on this motion next council meeting. to a judicial interim, interim release order with such conditions that prevent the officer from carrying out the duties of a police officer, or who are charged with serious Police Service Act violations where the chief of police will seek dismissal of the officer. Whereas the Safer Ontario Act was not passed before the provincial election in 2018, whereas identical provisions were later incorporated in the Community Safety Policing Act 2019, which was enacted by the provincial government in March 2019, but which has never been proclaimed in force. Therefore be it resolved that Ottawa City Council hereby calls on the provincial government to declare and enforce those sections of the Community Safety and Policing Act 2019 as soon as possible that are necessary to provide chiefs of police or police service boards as applicable with the discretion to suspend a member of the police service without pay who is charged with or convicted of a serious offence in those circumstances set out in the statute. And be it further resolved that Ottawa City Council hereby calls on the provincial government to further amend the legislative scheme governing police services so as to streamline the process for the termination of a police officer who is found guilty of a serious or criminal misconduct. I want to thank councillor Deans for her support on this, and I know that she has communicated this motion to members of the Police Services Board. And also thank past chair Eli El Shantiri, who worked very hard on this issue when he was chair of the Police Service Boards of Ontario. So we'll have a debate on this motion next council meeting. Are there any other notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting? No? Motion to introduce bylaws, councillor El Shantiri, please, seconded by councillor Eggly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, pre-reading, be read and passed.
Carried? Are there any written inquiries? Adjournment, councillor, oops, sorry, confirmation of bylaw, councillor.
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Eggly, that following bylaw will head and pass to confirm the proceeding of the council meeting of September 23rd, 2020.
On the motion, carried? Just a reminder to the members of the media, we'll be available at 2 o'clock for the media conference with Dr. Etches and city staff and councillor Eggly and myself. Councillor El Shantiri, adjournment, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't have to see, but move by myself, seconded by councillor Eggly, this council meeting be adjourned.
Carried, adoptee. Merci beaucoup. Thank you all very much. Stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.